Judge, do you have any opening remarks you'd like to make before we begin?
Yeah, I just want to welcome all of you on behalf of the commissioners and myself. A special session is a little different, but we like it because we get to delve in a little bit more to some of the topics. So we welcome all of you and we thank you for being here. And it's close enough to the weekend that I want to wish you a great weekend, but also those that I have not been able to say Happy New Year. So I think we've got maybe two more days that we can continue to say that. So Happy New Year to all of you and thank you for being here with us. Thank you.
Judge, may I suggest possibly a moment of silence for Chief Greg Allen?
Yeah, I think that's very special. Chief, of course, would have an amazing relationship. And I think besides the moment of silence, if you could comment a little bit on the relationship and...
Yes, I'll make a quick comment. It is sad to realize that Chief Allen didn't get to enjoy one day of retirement, but he served our community for about 44 years with the police department and almost 15 years as the chief. And really, the life of a chief, as far as the appointment, the assignment, is generally about two and a half years, but almost 15 is unheard of. And my condolences, our condolences to his family, his kids, and the El Paso Police Department, his family.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. So we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Item number three is public comment. We do have one speaker signed up for a public comment, Mr. Dion Dorado. Just as a reminder, there is a five-minute time limit. You will be timed.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Dorado.
Honorable members, commissioners, county judge, and thank you for giving a moment of silence to a brother cop because I was also one for many, many years. The reason that I wanted to speak is one essential part that says regional park essential renovations. Definitely, I want that done. I have fished Escarate Lake since about 1953, and I continue to fish it in every form, and I still do to this day, even though I have fished just about the two different oceans, every canal and lake that I could travel to. So I'm a fisherman, a real fisherman. And Escarate Lake can also be a golden opportunity again to be a fishing paradise for all of us who are essentially regional members of this community and also for other people who come and visit that are professional fishermen or other type of fishermen. We get it stocked. There are lunkers in there that are as heavy as 20-pound bass that are put in there by the state. There's many catfish and everything else, but survivability is one of the major things that it needs. It needs to breathe. It needs a good habitat, and it needs for that water to continuously replenish itself for the survivability of all those fish. That lake has not been drained since I can remember since the 50s, and that was the first time since back in the 30s. So the bottom has got a lot of muck. We don't know how much muck it's got, but I'll tell you about the muck. That muck is also a little golden parachute because it is loaded with vitamins, minerals, and everything you can think of that can just make a garden bloom like crazy. So that can be sold when you dig it out. It's not just a matter of throwing it in the dump. That is millions of dollars' worth of good fertilized ground that's there. I understand in digging it up. I understand the process because I've been involved in that also. And I volunteered myself to your director of the parks and recreation. I talked to Ms. Myers involving that, and I want to be very well involved in that as a member of the community, as a fisherman. I still see a lot of retired cops, retired law enforcement that go fish at Escarate Lake. That's all we got left. I'm closer to 80 in the hole in the ground than anything else, and I want to enjoy my lake. That lake was the first one that I really fished at since I was knee-high to a jackrabbit. So I want to continue until the day I die. My little John boat and my little motor, that electric motor, by the way, because we don't allow what we used to have at Escarate, which were boat races. We used to have boat races there. We used to have all kinds of activities, skiing and everything else, but keep it nice. No skiing, no boat races, none of that stuff. Just keep it beautiful to enjoy by the people that want to do paddle boats, people that want to do fishing with trolling motors, and that's it. And we'll enjoy it for a lot longer than all of us here can live because we won't ever see that project. We will never see that lake dry up and being abandoned. And hopefully, we'll never sell it to the city like at first it was thought that we were going to do, transfer to the city. No, it is a county lake. It is for us, county taxpayers, to enjoy. So I say, please, if you're going to pass the money, yes, indeed, I want it done, and so many of my friends also want it done. So please, if you will, vote on this thing to get it done. And Texas Parks and Wildlife will provide us all the fish, and we'll enjoy ourselves. So I thank you very much for even having it on there. That's what I thank you, is that somebody finally thought about doing something great for the lake. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And what a breath of fresh air that not only are you commenting, but you've given us some good insights and thoughts about things that we should consider. So we thank you for your time. You didn't mention that you were a Jefferson Fox, so you can do that now.
From San Juan, Glenwood Avenue, walked as a little kid even barefooted all the way to Escarate and then walked back to my home there off Glenwood by where San Juan Catholic Church is at. And I did it for so many years. And of course, my bait testing area was Franklin Canal, which is right there on El Paso Drive and Glenwood. So from all those places, this is what I spent my life doing, and I made it a profession. I have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars going all over the place to fish, from Hawaii, where I lived, all the way to when I was in Europe and I fished those areas. So I say, please, get it done.
We thank you, and we might be using your expertise. Thank you, Mr. Dorado.
Now to the regular agenda. Item number four, receive a presentation from the Public Works Department regarding the Public Works Infrastructure Department's overview and updates.
Welcome, Norma.
Judge Commissioners, Norma Rivera Palacios with the Public Works Department. And joining me this morning is Fernie Hernandez, the Infrastructure Director, County Engineer. This morning, we have a brief presentation on the Public Works Department, the focus being on the overview and project updates for the Infrastructure Division, one of our core divisions for the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department is organized into four core divisions: Infrastructure, Planning and Development, Parks and Recreation, and Facilities Management. Aside from the Infrastructure Division, the primary activities and services within each of the divisions will be presented to the court during special sessions as scheduled later this year. The Public Works Department has 315 employees, 237 full-time, 46 part-time, and that's custodians and cashiers, and 32 seasonal, and those would be the lifeguards. The Public Works Department has a budget of over $56 million. This includes special revenue for the road and bridge and the budget for the East Montana Water System. In addition to our yearly budget, we currently have over $753 million in projects throughout the Public Works Department, and we will be providing you additional information as we bring the other court divisions to the court for their presentations. But we'll be glad to provide you additional information on those $753 million projects. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Fernie Hernandez.
Welcome, Fernie.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Like Norma was saying, Fernie Hernandez with the Infrastructure Services Department. Like Norma was saying, today, we're going to provide a brief overview of our department. And if you can go to the next slide. Actually, I think that's the next one, please. Okay, here you can see that Infrastructure Services is one of the four under the Public Works umbrella, and we had prepared a video that we would like to show the court at this time. If you could bring that up, please. Go.
The Department of Infrastructure Services of the County of El Paso provides essential services that impact the county residents' lives. We are one of four divisions within the El Paso County Public Works Department.
Our staff is responsible for the designing, building, and maintaining of the county's roadway network in order to make our daily lives as uneventful as possible and ensure that the county residents can travel safely by foot, on bikes, by bus, or by car every day. We maintain approximately 506 square miles of the entire county of El Paso. Between our four warehouses, we actively maintain 650 centerline miles of the roadway and 20 bridges. That is the equivalent of maintaining a stretch of roadway from El Paso to Denver, Colorado.
The department maintains 13 major culvert structures, 138 lower crossings, 8,200 traffic signs and traffic lights. We also implement different pavement preservation methods, striping, shoulders, and roadway reconstruction when needed. As part of our storm water management responsibilities, we clear storm drains, waterways, storm water impoundments, and storm water systems in preparation for upcoming storm events. Our dedicated staff members remove standing water from our roadways. We actively maintain 11 floodway channels, 23 storm ponds, and over 40 underground systems. In addition, we also maintain our Fabin's Dam. While our road and bridge crews are out fighting these weather events, our engineers are analyzing and designing long-term solutions and seeking funding for regional improvements to mitigate major drainage issues. Not all water is bad news for the county, though. Our water operators diligently work to ensure our customers are provided quality water to their homes every day.
We are testing and flushing our system to make sure
We actively maintain 11 floodway channels, 23 storm ponds, and over 40 underground systems. In addition, we also maintain our Fabin's Dam. While our road and bridge crews are out fighting these weather events, our engineers are analyzing and designing long-term solutions and seeking funding for regional improvements to mitigate major drainage issues. Not all water is bad news for the county, though. Our water operators diligently work to ensure our customers are provided quality water to their homes every day.
We are testing and flushing our system to make sure we comply with the American Fresh Drinking Water Standards. We are maintaining the needs of our system, which include over 85 miles of our piping network, 600 fire hydrants, and actively seeking methods to improve our aging infrastructure.
Because the Department of Infrastructure Services is dedicated to our community, we have established various community beautifications initiatives. We actively seek out graffiti along our rightways and eradicate it where possible. Our staff also removes debris and illegal dumping along our roadways. Overgrown vegetation is removed along county roadways and all county-owned parcels. Our tire removal initiative cleans on average over 6,000 tires that were illegally dumped along our roadways each year. We also host various community cleanup events throughout the county that reach an average of over 2,000 residents each year with the help of various community partners. Our department actively cleans and maintains two county-owned cemeteries and the Concordia Cemetery. That's approximately 60 acres of cemetery land combined.
In addition to the beautification initiatives, our department provides outreach programs for the community. We collaborate with the El Pasuans Fighting Hunger Food Bank by hosting and volunteering staff hours every Saturday to provide food to the residents in the Fabin's area. We have collaborated with community services to perform the work of the home replacement program and provide the community with sandbags during the monsoon season as part of our outreach program.
Our dedicated team of professionals is committed to ensuring that the Department of Infrastructure Services performs a high level of service for our community. This is your Department of Infrastructure Services.
Well, that was our, our quick little intro of infrastructure. I have to apologize for the actor. I think he's a D-lister at best there. So our department is set up, if you could go to the next slide, I'm sorry. Our department is set up into two branches. The maintenance program is comprised of warehouses of Roden Bridge, which is four located Fabin's, Conoteo, Montana, and Horizon. We have the East Montana Water System and our graffiti wipeout program. I have illustrated the basic functions that, that they do under each warehouse and activity there. As you can see, each warehouse is set up to work independently and has the capability and function to work and run our day-to-day operations from each other, I'm sorry, from the other districts without assistance from each other. And that doesn't mean that we work in silos. However, as we, as you can see, there's specialties associated with each warehouse. And the intent of these specialties is so that every warehouse has the capability of helping out all the other warehouses. During special projects that arise, we don't leave the burden on just the specific warehouse that it's, that it's, that it falls under. And so we allow each warehouse to pitch in, and so it doesn't become a burden, and we all help out, and we don't leave just one warehouse to absorb all the extra work. We also have our East Montana Water System, which basically maintains our entire drinking water system, and then we also have our graffiti wipeout program. On the next branch is our infrastructure side, which analyzes, investigates, inspects, and designs the three basic functions of traffic, stormwater, and construction. So this is a wide lens view of our department. Next slide, please. So here you see the breakup of each warehouse. We have our Conoteo Warehouse, which is located in the west side, and then, of course, the Montana, the Horizon, and Fabin's area. Like we were mentioning in the video, we actively maintain our entire roadway network, but we focus on improving or doing a pavement preservation on 10% of our roadway network each year. This doesn't mean that in 10 years we replace our entire roadway. Because we're doing different procedures or different steps, it just means that we're upgrading or improving our system to extend the life of our roadways. We have a quick overview of the duties listed here that, that we do on our yearly operations. And combined, like the video was saying, we, we maintain 660 linear feet of mile, linear miles of roadway. We maintain over 80,000, 8,000 signs, sorry, 37 traffic lights along our roadways, and then we also maintain, respond to emergency and weather situation on these areas. Basically, we maintain 506 square miles of the county, and the County Warehouse monitors 3%, the Fabin's covers 18%, the Horizon 44%, and Montana, the remainder, 34% of the area. Here you can see the East Montana Water System. These are areas that we cover. We cover five zones, one located on the west side, one located in the far east, and three along the Montana sector. Our staff is responsible for maintaining the system, testing, testing the water quality, responding to leaks, services requests, and generally be on call 24 hours a day to be able to respond to the system. Next slide, please. Our typical maintenance crew cover our standard beautification initiatives such as picking up debris and removing weeds from our roadway infrastructure and stormwater drains. However, we do have some programs that are just dedicated to cleaning our community. For instance, we have our graffiti wipeout program, which is comprised of a two-person crew. These two, two individuals are responsible for maintaining and removing graffiti from the entire county, all 506 square miles of the county. They are helped out by, are supplemented with adult probation clients, which provide in-kind services for community service hours. The program covers, of course, the entire county, removing elements such, graffiti elements such as markings on walls, mailboxes, concrete, or et cetera. This crew also maintains the Concordia Cemetery by removing weeds, pruning trees, and generally cleaning the site and having that, any repairs or anything that needs to be done along that area. We also have a dedicated tire collection program that we established four years ago. This is a dedicated staff member that was hired specifically to do these tire cleanups. And so his, his duties is, three days out of the week, he just drives around our entire roadway network and picks up tires off, off the discarded tires on the side of the road. At first, we didn't think it was going to be such a big impact, but in the four years that he's been, he's been doing this duties, he's collected just an average of 6,000 tires every year. And that's just discarded off whatever we can find on the, on the drivable surfaces. We also host community events at our warehouses during our spring and summer seasons. These events are open to all the county residents that take and dispose of their household waste, hazardous chemicals, tires, and scrap metals. And we also have the two warehouses that are dedicated to cleaning and maintaining the Paupers Cemeteries in addition to the, to the Concordia Cemetery. That includes the interment of the cremains as well. Under our Infrastructure Branch, the first division we'll be looking at is our Traffic Safety Program. Under this program, we're responsible for evaluating current roadway conditions, evaluating signage needs, and general life safety issues. This program is responsible for evaluating the current trends and improving, improvements occurring in, in other places or other parts of the county that implement, we can implement through our roadway network, such as new pavement materials, new signage, or just improvements technology which can implemented our system. We have started two specific pilot programs within the last, within the past three years to show these, these improvements. One of them is our radar detecting signs. So these, in coordination with the, with the Sheriff's Office and local residents, we've placed these radar detection speed signs along these areas where we have a lot of high traffic or a lot of high volume and high rates of speed, which are intended to be residential, residential roadways. So we'll put up these signs. Unfortunately, we, we found, we haven't had a very good result in this because we've had mixed results. Unfortunately, we find out that some people use these, these signs to test how fast they can get their car up, and so that's one of the drawbacks of, of this pilot program. The other is our new flashing LED solar lights. These are intended to be, these chavrons, as you can see on the screen, are intended to be set up in these isolated dark parts of our county where we have these dangerous curves, and we, we set these up to, to try to prevent roadway departures. This program is also responsible for determining the current road conditions, determining which pavement preservation method we can utilize to maximize the lifetime of our roadway. This also takes into account the budget we have to determine how to maximize our funds and produce the 10% target rate. Here you could see, I guess, our year-by-year comparison of our pavement program. As you can see, the centerline of, of our roadway miles basically steadily increases, which in turn requires us to keep adjusting our pavement preservation method target dates. While pavement preservation methods isn't a widely-used industry method for many communities as they still operate under the old assumption where you build a brand-new roadway and just leave it alone for 20 years, and then after that, we come back and take a look what needs to be done. We are actively operating and maintaining these, these roadways that we have, and so we've been operating under this system since 2016. This method allows and anticipates that we can have low-traffic residential streets last up to 50 years without reconstruction as compared to the 20 years that are, they're designed for. Highly-travel archerials between 35 to 40 years, and basically extend the lifetime of our, of our roadway system. Well, this theory that we are following is, is basically set up to establish we, for long-term goals, six years in, we want to know what, how we're doing, basically how this, this program is going to do. So we set up a, a benchmark for our road survey. It was done in 2020 to determine, I'm sorry, by an independent consultant, to determine what the condition of our roadway network was. The findings that they provided was 3% of our roadway network is failing, the bulk of it, which is of course Ascension, that's a nine-mile stretch of, of the 18 miles that we're failing. 9% is at a, rated as a D level, which means that 80%, 88% or higher is rated, of our paved surfaces is rated C or higher. Based on the average, the US average, the average road condition for, for communities is just below a D average, and so we're, we're a little bit ahead of the curve, and these are using standard pavement condition index study. Here you could see a snapshot of last year's paving program that we had. As you can see, the bulk of the mileage that we've done comes from the chip seal process, which is performed in-house. These pavement preservation methods are efficient for the county because we save on the labor costs, and we're able to extend the amount of mileage installed. We also hire our contractor to perform the overlay and the box seal process of these programs. In addition to the upgrade, in addition to, to these construction issues, we've also had upgrades to, to two miles of our new roadways. Basically, these areas were in the Horizon area between Ascension and Horizon. These residents only had gravel roadways at the time, and we've upgraded to two miles of it to chip sealed surface. This is an initiative that we've undertaken in the last five years where we take leftover material that we, we accumulated from the last year, and we imply into the, this upcoming year to be able to extend or improve the, the roadway network that we have currently. So this was, we were able to hit our target goal within our $4 million budget this year. Our stormwater program, which is the youngest of the programs that we have, because of the court's generosity and allows us to establish the stormwater budget of just over $3 million a, a year since 2019, under this program, we are responsible for analyzing the stormwater master plan, breaking down, breaking down the assumed solutions, and creating a set of manageable projects that can be designed and constructed within a two-to-three-year period. Since 2019, we are able, we were able to purchase new equipment to use during our daily operation and specialized equipment to be used for emergency flooding operations. We also have completed four major projects and two minor projects. We currently have six more major projects in the queue waiting to be finalized and going out for solicitation. We also have 10 more projects that are just about to begin the design process. In addition to these major projects, we also have a, excuse me, we also design and perform minor drainage projects in-house. These projects are known as urbanized flooding points, which we typically have spent previous time going out there and pumping or removing standing water from these areas just because of the way development and urbanization created around them. So these, these troubled areas are reoccurring troubled areas that we always have to go out there and, and either drain, pump out, or do some sort of repairs on, every time that we have a weather event. As of 2019, our staff has designed 17 minor drainage improvements, and our construction staff has completed the work using our yearly allocated budget. So it doesn't really affect, we haven't had to come out and request additional funds from the court to do that. Which leads us to our final program, which is the, the Construction Infrastructure Program. This program is responsible for analyzing, inspecting, surveying, and designing small construction projects that we can do in-house. These projects include designing new roadways, upgrading roadways, such as described previously. We also perform improvements to the current facilities, such as the parking lot in JP6 and Clint, where we designed and constructed a new retention pond and parking lot to fix the drainage issues. We also designed a new site to be utilized for future improvements or future constructions, such as the animal clinic site or the sheriff's backlot, backlot parking lot. Under these programs, we work closely with Roden Bridge crews. They'll be working well on the project depending on the complexity and the location of the project in order to design and construct the project. This allows us to maximize our budget while minimizing the lower project costs. It does take us a little bit longer because all these, of course, all these projects are performed by in-house staff, which we squeeze in during the time we're not performing our regular duties or other responsibilities. And this was a quick, really quick overview of department infrastructure. I can answer any questions you would have at this time?
I want to comment, I don't think sometimes our community realizes the amount of work and, and dedication, you know, working with transportation and I want to get a little bit more involved in that, but the comments that we hear about the collaboration with the county, working with TechDOT, how you take on their standards, it's just extremely, I know we feel very proud of the amount of work that is done and the comments that we hear back, even from, you know, from customers and suppliers, and so very, very proud of the work, but I'm glad this, this have, that's why I like the special sessions because I think the community gets to hear and see the amount of work. And, you know, our big thanks and to all your team, Norma and Fernie and everyone else that's involved in that, but it's just very impressive is, is how much you're doing and the amount of money you have to, to work with and, and, you know. And then the collateral, because you've got some departments that overlap, for example, Escarate, right? You've got Public Works at the same time, you've got Recreation, and they work together, and a lot of moving parts. So personally, I want to thank you for, for that work, and Betsy, for your guidance on that. Commissioner Olgin, please.
Thank you, Judge. Fernie, I just wanted to take a minute to thank you and all of your staff, and of course, Norma, for all of the work that you do. As you all know, a large portion of my precinct has a lot of our unincorporated areas, so we receive a lot of phone calls from our residents regarding roads and signs and drainage and flooding and stormwater and everything else under the sun. And I just want to always, I thank you all for always being so responsive, all of the staff that we have at the different warehouses. I mean, they're, they're amazing, all of them, with the community cleanups and just everything that they do. So I just wanted to thank you and to let you all know that you all are definitely, definitely very much appreciated.
Commissioner Lillen?
Yes, Fernie and Norma, I can't thank you enough. And, you know, you, if you step back and look at who are our customers, it's the citizens of this county and the, of the city. And just an example, court, that I had a vendor called me the other day on the expansion, expansion project on Rojas, and I think it's a city project and TechDOT, they, they needed to encroach on county property just to put up some signs. And by a simple phone call to, to Norma and her team, something that could have been, it could have held up the project, multimillion-dollar project on a simple fix to allow those people to put their signage on, endroams on county property. I would estimate saved a lot of money and time. And I'll echo what Commissioner Olgin said, as far as responsive, all it takes is one call, whether it's to you, Norma, or somebody in your team, and they make things happen. You all look for ways to, to say yes, to make it happen instead of the easy way. You all look for ways to to say yes, to make it happen, instead of the easy way, wow, we can't do that. Anybody can say that. So we all appreciate it, and I talked to Betsy a lot about your responsiveness and your 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 agenda to get things done. So it's much, much appreciated. And I didn't realize that the mileage that we service is equal to from El Paso to Denver, that's a lot of paving.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coronado?
Judge, yeah, you know, I received a briefing from Betsy regarding the roads conditions out there and how y'all are maintaining, and I was very pleasantly surprised to see how, because we do get a lot of complaints about from people about the roadways, but I was very impressed at the maintenance that y'all are doing with respect to the roadways. And some of the projects I know that are going to stormwater, I know for my area, Commissioner Olgin and I are probably the ones that have the most land outside the city, the outline areas. And I do, obviously, we do have a tour plan that I want to see the projects that aren't going out in the Cano Tio and the West Side area. But I'm, you know, I'm thinking that I know, I know what kind of money it is it's going to take to fix our flooding problems, but at the same time, I think we we need to do a better job of trying to secure those funds because we had that red flag back in 2006, and I think we really need to step up our game in the stormwater area for our outline communities especially. And we also need to make sure that we reach out to the city because two years ago, I think it was, I don't know if it was July or August, I went to the airport to drop off some friends, and we got stuck out there, and there was water on airways almost waist high. This is inside our city. And so I think we need to work, you know, and the people inside the city are still our constituents, and so I think we need to make sure we reach out to both organizations that we try and do that. And like I said, I think we're doing a, your department's doing a great job, and we need to find you some resources to do a better job, I think, as 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 an organization. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner, and you have a very vulnerable area that
We do, very vulnerable.
Not a harsh rain, sometimes you get hit pretty hard up there in the Ventana area, and so we'll look at that. Norma, Fernie, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Item number five, receive a presentation from the Planning and Development Department and its consultant CEA group on the county's 75-acre east side development plan project and provide guidance to staff on the master plan.
Welcome, Sal.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner Sal Alonso, Associate Director of Planning and With me today is Mr. Jorge Escarte from CEA Group, who will be presenting this presentation. Just to give you a little bit more background on this, on this project, the county went into a interlocal with CEA back in March of 2022, and this was for CEA to analyze our 75 acres that the county currently owns on the east side of El Paso, near the intersection of Loop 375 and Pelicano, just north of that. It's about 75 acres undeveloped area, which is within the city of El Paso's city limits. We were using CEA's expertise to help us guide us into developing the 75 acres. Originally, as part of the court's vision in this 75 acres, we were trying to develop something more in the medical government type of development in this 75 acres. So this presentation will provide where we're at currently and where we, the timeline as we're moving forward on this project and provide some insight. So we do provide, we would ask for any feedback that the court may have or any comments, and again, we'll be happy to answer any questions throughout the presentation or after. So with that, I would like to turn over the presentation to Mr. Jorge Escarte.
Thank you, Sal. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. Jorge Escarte with CEA Group, for the record. I'm with the CEA Engineering Group, we're a local civil engineering firm that does land development and public infrastructure with several utilities or several entities here in the, in El Paso and in the county. And we do land development throughout El Paso County, New Mexico, all the way to Clint, Fabens, and all that. So we bring a lot of expertise and knowledge of the development process, not just with the city of El Paso, but throughout as well in the El Paso County development. Like Sal mentioned, this is a 75 acre that is county-owned land between, off of Loop 375, between Pelicano and Vista del Sol. It's right next to the existing TechDOT East, Far East Maintenance Facility. This property was annexed in 2005 into the city of El Paso. It was part of the originally Paso's Paseos de Sol annexation, which was the 300 acres that was annexed as part of the Mesquite Trails, which is the residential, single-family residential development behind it, plus John Druigan, and then the 75 acres. It was annexed into the city of El Paso back in 2005, and is my file, I was the one that actually worked on the annexation back for the developers, SISD, as well as the county back in the days. When property gets annexed into the city of El Paso, it comes in as ranch farm. So currently, the 75 acres is zoned ranch farm. So in order to be able to develop into, like Sal had mentioned, is a governmental medical complex, we need to go through a zoning process to rezone the property to make sure that the proposed uses fits the the need of what the zone's going to be and what the vision is from, you know, the county and the vision of this commission. Right now, as as part of the city of El Paso, since it's in the city of El Paso, it requires for it to be rezoned, as well as for it to be also platted. So you cannot build anything on property that has not been platted, and that's one of the requirements that the city of El Paso has when they passed the ordinance back in 2008, that any undeveloped land has to be platted before you can apply for permits, construction, vertical permits, and so on and so forth. So that's part of our scope, is to master plan the 75 acres, to rezone the property, to make sure that the zoning that we are going to be seeking does fit the intended use of what the vision is of this county for that 75 acres, be a medical complex, governmental complex facility, plating, and as well as a traffic impact study. So anytime that you rezone property or plat the property and you exceed a certain threshold of 100 vehicles per hour, you have to do a traffic study and submit it to make sure that there's no negative impact to the existing infrastructure of around the property to make sure that the the project has adequate transportation facilities to meet the the additional loads that the project is going to generate. And then as part, the next, and the last step is subdivision improvement plans, and we'll get to that when you see the master plan. When we subdivide property, there is a develop, there is a street that will have to be extended, which is Sevalla, where currently it terminates, and it will have to be extended to the, to Joe Battle, to Loop 375. And that's part of the master thoroughfare plan that the city of El Paso has, that we have to extend Sevalla to make sure it connects with Loop 375, which will benefit this property because now you have a good access point, because Sevalla is a minor arterial that, and looking at the big picture, Sevalla is going to intersect with the future Tierra Este Mission Ridge, which the county is working on and bringing from Pelicano all the way to the Ventanas. And now you have Sevalla connecting on the east-west corridor. So if you start looking at the big picture, it's going to bring great access points to get people in and out. The next slide? Okay, just to let you know, we're, what, some timeline of events. Like Sal mentioned, we started back in March of 2023, 2022. We had a kickoff meeting with some of the identified stakeholders that the, back in, the county planning had identified, and it was in April 14 of 2022. The identified stakeholders were UMC, El Paso County Medical Examiners, Emergent Health Network, County Transit Fleet, County Infrastructure, County Annex, and also the County Senior Nutrition Center. These were some of the potential users that were, that we were asked to consider to see if we can fit them somewhere in these 75 acres as, and that was the initial direction. Things have evolved since then. We originally had our notice to proceed, April 20th, and then what we ended up doing from there to now is we met individually with all, a lot of the stakeholders. With UMC, I think we've had two or three meetings directly with UMC. We've had meetings with the medical examiners, the county transit and fleet, and just to get what their needs were and their requirements to see if we can fit somewhere in the 75 acres in developer plan that would have a better use for the entire community. And then I think our last follow-up we had was with, UMC was November 9th, and it was more a virtual meeting to see if there's any other uses, other medical uses that UMC can foresee that that we can probably fit into this master plan. Originally, we had developed three or four master plan options with various uses, various, with all the stakeholders. Things have evolved, where I think initially where transit probably would be there, the infrastructure, county infrastructure would have like a warehouse facility there. Things have evolved a little bit to have, to focus more on the, just focus more governmental professional medical complex. Let's try to take out the transit, let's take out the, when I mean transit, transit fleet, you know, storing of buses and having a warehouse, try to focus more for it to be more of a medical complex, professional environment. So our latest master plan that we have has removed some of those stakeholders, which would be the county transit fleet and the infrastructure warehousing, and focus more on uses that are more medical complex and professional office development. Next slide, please. I only have one more slide, and if you have any questions, please interject during the course, that's fine, I have no issue with that.
Jorge, the only one that I was thinking about, when you plant, do you have to have, be very specific as to what you're going to do, or can you do it more from a general?
That's a good question. So what we're looking at on plating is just to plat the property. You don't have to identify the uses. But when we rezone, yes, you do have to identify the uses.
You already know what the use is going to be.
Right, so one of the things that we're trying to do is do what we call, or resone it to a, what they call a GMU, a general mixed-use district. What that does, it gives you some flexibility. It kind of ties you to your site plan, to the master plan, but then it does give you flexibility on the types of uses that you want to, that we identify upfront. So for example, when we get to the master plan, you'll see it, when we, we have to do a report and submit it to the city of El Paso and say that we have intentions to have, you know, medical, hospital, clinics, doctors' offices, professional offices. So we're going to try to be as vague and open as, as much as possible, so that in the future, because this is a, 75 acres is going to take time to develop. I know UMC has expressed interest on a 30-acre hospital, obviously, I don't think they have the funds to do it, but they are, if they, if they move forward, they want to at least have a vision to start, hey, let's, let's start finding, you know, trying to secure the funds to hopefully build that hospital. What ends up happening is that we get tied a little bit to the master plan, but we try to be as vague to the uses. So the last thing you want is
To commit tools.
Is, or do a C4, just saying, which is a commercial, it's the highest commercial-use district. But then all of a sudden, you can put a Walmart shopping center. Well, is that really the, the vision of the, of the commission is to do that, or to do the medical complex, governmental office? So when we go with the GMU, we will not identify supermarkets. So in, in the future, say, a Walmart does approach you all and say, we want, we want the 75 acres, then by outright, they cannot build, they have to go to city council or submit an application to the city of El Paso to change the intended use. If it was not listed on one of the, on the report that we had on the master plan. So, you know, so we're trying to be as open and vague, but still stick to the professional medical concept. And unless we, we're told otherwise, if the direction is no, go shopping center, then we'll include that. I mean, and that's why we're here, is to try to get direction from you all to see if we're going in the right direction, or we need to modify some of our, you know, what, some of our assumptions that we've been going on right now.
Thank you, Jorge.
So right here on the project timeline, obviously, we're in front of you giving your presentation on the, on the, on the master plan. Hopefully, any comments that we get from you all, any directions, you know, we're looking at hopefully having it done in January 27th. And then we would have to also update our traffic study if the direction is, you know, to include other uses that, that you, that are not something that we've assumed. And then we're looking at submitting the rezoning application to the city of El Paso at the end of this month. Rezoning in the city of El Paso, and not just the city of El Paso, state of Texas, takes anywhere from four to five months, even though the city of El Paso has expressed that going after GMU and being the county, that they would try to expedite it. And when we say expedite, they probably can shave three to four weeks at the most, they cannot shave more than that because there are state statute requirements that you have to notify residents, you got to post it on the newspaper, and there's timelines. So once you add all that timelines, it ends up building to about three to four months. I always say five months, just to be on the safe side. But what we're looking at doing is, in the process, is start the plating process as well. Submit around early March, start the preliminary plat process. And then, and there's a bunch of deadlines that we, or not deadlines, but hearings, we have to go in front of the, on the rezoning, we go in front of city plant commission as well as city council. And if you look at some of the timelines that we have, we're looking at city council about mid-May, tentatively. And I say tentatively because those aren't set, depends on their council schedules, and then also city attorneys have to write the ordinances, and we're really, that's not something that we can control, it's staff-driven. So if they meet that deadline, then, you know, they'll be able to post it on the, on the agenda. And then we have plating improvement plans with hopefully final, final plat on city plant commission early June. And, and kind of what we're trying to do is that, trying to meet those, some of these deadlines, is that the only end user that I know that has expressed interest and is ready to start is the El Paso Medical Examiners. They've identified about a three-to-five acre site, and we have it on the master plan that, that they've, we've already shared that information, it's, their architect is M&amp;K, and we've been in coordination with them on sharing some of our information so that they know kind of where the site is going to be assigned, if it's something that is approved by this commission, by the commissioners on the master plan. They're the only ones that I know that are, have the ready, ready to start, they already started designing, and I believe have the funds for construction. So in order for them to start construction, obviously, we have to plat the property, we got to rezon it, and I believe last time we talked to M&amp;K, I think they're looking at submitting plans sometime in late this year.
Jorge, and you could take on individual projects, like in this case, you could sort of cut out
Yes.
That place and
Right. And again, this is land that is going to still be owned by the county of El Paso, the full, not full 75 acres, because we are going to dedicate a roadway, and actually, we can go to the master plan on the next plan. So I don't have a, so Sevalla is the major roadway on the north, I'm not sure if you see it. It runs from east to, from east to west, right, that's Sevalla, I'm not sure if you see the cursor? That's Sevalla, so that's, that's, it currently terminates on the Mesquite Trails or Mesquite Trails Development, and we're going to extend it into, into Loop 375. Excluding that, everything else is going to be still county-owned land. So you can chop it off, chop, you know, the, the land for the end users however you want. We also have identified some commercial uses. I mean, when you have a hospital district in this area, and you potentially have I mean, when you have a hospital district in this area, and you potentially have a county annex, you have the public there, people going in and out, you have county work, employees being there, the last thing you wanna do is have people, always have to drive just to go get a coffee, or, or go to lunch, or grab a bite. So, what we've identified in the front corridor is potential county, I mean, commercial uses, restaurant, hopefully, some other type of commercial activity that would hopefully be able to sustain, you know, and, and support some of the, the employees that are gonna be in the, either in the, in the hospital, or the medical clinics, and the county annex. So, you know, the vision of that, what, what ends up happening, if you all lease it, sell it, really that's up to the court to decide, make those decisions. But we're just trying to identify some of these uses, so that we can hopefully move forward. One of the things that we're trying to do is also is, is not have, if you look at some of the commercial activities, not have all the parking lot in the front, is try to bring the buildings up a little bit closer to Joe, to Loop Three Seventy-Five, where they have a nice facade, try to get people have the parking lot in the back, so that you have a nice gateway, a nice vision, you know, into this medical governmental complex. And, and hopefully, you know, by having some type of restrictions, covenants, design guidelines, would hopefully, you know, work and make sure that this entire development looks as one complex, it doesn't look like a hodgepodge. And that's the last thing you wanna do, is have a hodgepodge of, of development, you wanna make it look that as you walk into this complex, you drive into this complex, it's, it looks a seamless development. You know, you can incorporate some of the stuff that U M C does on their architecture, bring it in hopefully to the, into the medical examiners, incorporate some type of architecture on commercial, on the commercial development. So, these are just some of the suggestions. Our scope is just to master plan, not to generate vertical construction, not to do vertical plans or, or design, is really just to master plan, identify the uses, identify, you know, some of the access points, drainage, well, you know, as part of this, we have to have a drainage pond that will eventually be part of the county, and the county will maintain this roadway. One, one point that I would like to identify is, is, I'm not sure, can I have, can I control this? Or, or not control it, but a mouse?
What do you wanna zoom in on in the team?
Well, I just wanted to identify who all the users, the users.
Okay.
We can control the presentation, the cursor, so you just let us know where you-
Okay, so, the, I guess the large middle portion of the property, right? That is the, the U M C thirty acres, they've, they've clearly identified that, they feel that they need a thirty-acre facility, that it would be in the about hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-bed hospital that they're looking at.
Jorge, can I interrupt just for a second before you get off that? I, I understood in my conversations with U M C, that they were looking at seventy acres.
They're looking, Jacob also refers to this as that seventy-acre tract you all have, but I've, I've been working with him on this for, for quite some time, and he knows, he's told me specifically that of the seventy acres, they need somewhere between thirty to forty. If they've pinned it down to thirty, but they've told us, they've consistently said thirty to forty acres.
That's my understanding as well, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Mr. Sintraum was at the kickoff meeting, and he identified in the thirty acres that they were looking at. And also, they had, one of the things that, when we reached out to U M C is, what other uses, you know, what other facilities, uses, or services that can support U M C? And they've identified by having a hospital, we gotta have doctors' offices. So, we've identified doctors' offices, and it's in the back of Sevalla, next to the residential development. I think it's number five, right, correct, back there, is doctors' offices. You know, it can be, that can be a multi-story, two, three-story building, very similar to, if you look at Providence East, they have their hospital, and then they have doctors' offices next to it. So, that's one of the things that I know U M C had expressed, is that, you know, doctors always wanna, to be able to support the emergency or whatever, doctors' visits, or hospital visits, it'd be great to have doctors where they can jump back and forth if they need to. So, we identified about a two-acre to three-acre site for doctors' offices. The, the pink area in the front, I think it's the number four, correct? That is a county annex, again, that's something that, is it necessary or not, it was identified as a potential use, that a stakeholder can, can be there, the county annex, but it's not just the county annex, it'd be county annex, with I think that indicated like a sheriff's, you know, room for sheriff's office, the senior nutrition can be there as well. And then, also, Emergen. Emergen, when we met with Emergen, they said, Health Network, they said they don't need a standalone pod, or, we can always lease or rent, either in doctors' offices, or in county annex facilities, if it's a multi-story facility, that's something that they can work with, but they don't need their own building standalone, that they typically work with other health providers, or other, you know, buildings that they share building, you know, access on, on other facilities.
Jorge, I'm sorry, before you move on, can I just ask for clarification?
Sure.
So, when we talk about a far east county annex, are the discussions more a county annex, like the one that we have in Isleta, where like the tax office is there, or is it more of like another patrol station for the sheriff? Because that's what we had been discussing.
It was a mix of both, so it was more like the Isleta annex, and I think Isleta has also room for sheriffs?
No.
They don't?
So, this one would be, we, of course, we would control what goes in there, right? The county would control, based on what we're seeing as far as needs. We've been recently doing some analysis, like for example, on tax offices and how much demand there is at each location. We may, in this particular one, especially if we expand at the George Dieter, we may not need a tax office at this location. The sheriff's, sheriff's patrol is one for sure. Even the senior nutrition is not something that we think would go here after further discussions. We actually think there's another location that's better suited, that Irene thinks also is better suited, that we've been identifying. But, so, we'll, we'll control what goes in there. At this point, it's preserving and planning for the space for there to be space for the county. There was something else I wanted to add on that. Another thing that we might, because we have not specifically identified what would go in there, we've been talking about the Veterans One-Stop Shop. We might go in, the court may approve us leasing with both, maybe both at E H N and at Endeavors, I don't know, you know, but, but that, those leases may be temporary. At some point, we may say, you know what, we don't have all the services we want to have in one place for veterans, let's put something in this area that gives us some space for a Veterans One-Stop Shop. So, we're not, we're not today nailing down any of those, like what exactly will be in there, but we're, we're, we are behind the scenes right now, working on all the different ideas and concepts and what the needs are. But sheriff substation is one of those high priority-
Yeah, definitely.
Needs.
And have we consulted with the sheriff to see what he thinks about the location?
We had invited them, or I think they were identified as one of the stakeholders, they did not attend, but we can definitely, through Public Works or Planning Development, we can actually reach out to them again, and see if they have an, an interest in identifying, or being in one of these areas.
I mean, definitely, I think the area would work, because that's the fastest-growing area right there.
That is correct.
But there's gonna be a lot of traffic in and out.
Right.
So, I think we do need to reach out to them again.
And I'm assuming, Betsy, the logistics, for example, I'm thinking, like the medical examiners, and you're taking into consideration, I don't know if this is a question for you, Jorge, the, the logistics of having, for example, the medical examiners being further away from the hospital, or, you know, those kinds of conditions, is that all taken into consideration?
I mean, when we talked to the medical examiners, they identified that they would like to be in this area. They are right across the hospital, though, the medical examiner's being right across the hospital, and they're the ones in red, I'm not sure if you see in the master plan. It's the, the buildings that we've identified as the medical examiners.
You're saying across the hospital, if, if U M C were to-
Yes, but it would also be close to, so we've, we've been, we talked about that also with the medical examiner. It is more, you know, the central El Paso population has shifted further east, and so it does move them more, what they believe would be more central access. It's easy access right off of the, the Three Seventy-Five. It would also put them close to the hospitals of Providence, not far from Del Sol, you know, off I-ten. So, there's, there's a lot of pros, and there's also a lot of pros, and I know this is more about the master plan, but the master plan allows for the space for a much better design of the building, and much what you're seeing in more modern medical examiner facilities. Part of this master plan you also see on here, and something we really emphasized, is the, when you're a grieving family and you pull up to a medical examiner's facility, you want to create an environment that is-
I'm not sure I understand.
Oops, me either. You wanna create an environment that is peaceful, because you're, you're dealing with grieving families at the worst points in their life. And so, this, this design is also conducive to that, like more green space, trees, just even enough parking.
Yeah, you're just less restricted from-
Right, we have, we have such, and it's back in the corner, right next to a cemetery, it's not the most conducive environment where we're located right now. So, this master plan is something that we've put a lot of input and thoughts, the team for the medical examiner's facility.
Thank you, Betsy. Yes, Commissioner?
Thanks for the presentation. Wanted to bring out a couple of comments or questions. I heard you talking earlier about, you know, with the, with the retail spaces not wanting to have like a supermarket there, and I definitely wouldn't advocate for like putting a Walmart there, or anything like that, but have we, have we looked at the area to understand if it's a food desert, and what opportunities there would be to partner with some of, you know, local providers, maybe like Desert Spoon Food Hub, or something like that? I'm just, you know, thinking about opportunities to provide access to healthy food in this area as well, you know, maybe like, doesn't have to be like a huge supermarket, but like bodega-style, or, or even, you know, looking at some of these buildings and using them to incubate small restaurants, or, or food production facilities, because, you know, if there's a lot of people working at that facility, both at the county annex and at the, at the hospital facility, they're gonna need a place to go have lunch, they're gonna need a place to, to do those things, and it could be a benefit for the community as well. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, and, and see if there's any, any, any way that could be worked into, to, to what's going on. And then, the second thing I wanted to bring up is, in conversations with, with Mr. Sintraum at U M C, one thing that worries him, I think about the, especially on the Joe Battle side, having all the commercial at the, at, at the highway side, it could impede access for emergency vehicles, and, or even patients that are trying to come into the hospital, you know, if you have a lot of traffic coming in and off of the highway, and those entrances for like the retail and, and other, you know, whatever businesses that may be there, you know, how, how can we make sure that emergency vehicles have, have direct access to the hospital, since it's gonna be setback?
To answer, I guess, your first question, the development, the commercial development that we're looking in the front is, primarily, we're looking at more restaurant-based type of facilities and uses. Because as you look at it, in order, the closest restaurants are gonna be there by Target, which is Windermere, and, and, you know, you got the Olive Garden, the Red Lobster, and then, the next one's gonna be, you gotta go to Rojas. And, and, I mean, in order to be, to get access, you gotta go, you gotta make a U-turn, I mean, just, it's, I mean, you'll probably get stuck ten, fifteen minutes. So, our intent, purpose is to try to create some type of, either if it's an incubation, or a restaurant, you know, that's something that I don't, we're not dictating right now, that can come, you know, as, there's interest from people saying, hey, you know, county, I wanna do some type of a restaurant, or, or whatever it is, it would come before you all. Here, we're just trying to identify the potential uses for this property along the frontage. And, and it can be restaurants, you know, small convenience stores, and, and, and I think it would be able to, there's a need, if you look at it, I mean, there's a huge need, not just because of this development, but also you look at the single-family residential behind you, which is probably about, probably about a thousand homes, or eleven-hundred homes, in the Mesquite Trails development. And, and as restaurants and businesses, they always look at trips, how many households, how many, you know, within a one-mile, within a two-mile radius, to be able to see if they would, their business would be able to be supported by the existing developments in that area. So, we would identify, you know, restaurants as one of those uses along the, the corridor of Loop Three Seventy-Five.
I'm sorry, so what, Commissioner Stout, what you're saying, and this is the purpose of this presentation, is to hear this feedback, but what you're saying is you wanna make sure that we don't block off with our zoning or anything that would not allow us to have some kind of, like, I think near my, I'm, I'm kind of a ways from a grocery store, but if it wasn't for my little produce in a shopping center, I mean, that's where I run to get a tomato, that's where I run to get lettuce, or whatever I need, like one of those types of convenient, but access to like produce and healthier options as well for households, but as well as like-
I don't want a convenience store that's just got like-
Right.
Chips and turkey and things like that.
Right, my, like, my little store, my little, my little produce store has, it does have chips, but it, and beer, but it also has all the, all the produce, it has small amounts of meat, you know, it's, it's really convenient and access to healthier options. So, having something like that, like, it's a small store in a strip mall, having access to something like that here is not something that would be off the books, is what we wanna make sure. That's your feedback to us on this presentation?
Well, as, as we started, it gives us an opportunity to set the, the philosophical premise of what, what do we want there? Healthy food, you know, I think we can control that, as you said, you know, more of a medical, you know, site, I mean, so I think that's what, what they wanna hear is from us, is, you know, what do we, you know, what do we expect, what's our vision on it, and what a great opportunity to incorporate some of the initiatives, for example, in veterans, or healthy food, and, you know-
A subway, maybe, I, I know that's not local, but like, that's a, that's also a healthier food option, and, and this, some of these issues that would be convenient to both the, the property as a whole, and then the, the surrounding area as a whole.
Yeah, I mean, something like, you know, if you have doctors' offices, you have a hospital, it's a medical facility, a food pharmacy, right, like, something, something along those lines, where you can also use that food pharmacy to source produce and, and things like that from local growers, you know, like Desert Food, Desert Spoon does, so, something, I mean, something a little more innovative, more, a little more than just like a convenience store, but, you know, to provide, again, that access to, to healthy food in that area.
And actually, how we fill these, and, and what we do with these retail areas, would be a whole additional conversation we'll go through after we create the design, because we may sell that section off to someone to do the retail, but we could put some caveats into that, or, you know, but those are all things, if we, we just are asking to preserve the space for something like that use.
If I could add, Judge Commissioners, the proposed zoning, which is a G M U, will allow that, so we wanna be very flexible, like Mr. Stout was saying, so, we're, we're not identifying the end users at this point, we just wanna, you know, make sure that the, the development is suitable for anything, whether it's a subway, or if we sell it off, or a different type of use, but we wanna make sure that by zoning a G M U, it gives us the flexibility, that, that way we're not tied down, and then we have to go back to city council and rezonate it again, and I, we hate to do that, just because the time it would take to, to go all that, and then have to go back to the public as well. So, just wanna mention that, you know, we, we, at this time, everything, we appreciate this feedback, and we will make sure that we incorporate, but I, I think the way it's laid out, as far as the, the partial, I guess, on the abutting Loop Three- laid out as far as the, the partial, I guess, on the abutting Loop 375 will provide that flexibility for if we're... feel perhaps or any of the healthy food options that allows us with this GMU.
Okay, Commissioner Leon?
Yes, this, this might be a little premature, but I was noticing that your helipad is in the parking lot itself. I, I don't remember you stating how many stories the hospital might be, but I would think it's probably more expensive, but to locate that helipad on top of the building, sort of like UMC has now, because where you have it now, you can't park there, you can't drive through there, there's some lighting requirements and what have you, but I, I think it would be much more efficient on top of the building.
We just, we just showed it just for demonstration that it, the intent is to have a helipad. We're not designing at this point. UMC, once they get the funding for the design, then they would get into possibly, you know, if the direction is put it on, on the ceiling or on the rooftop, then, you know, they're incorporating to the design, but we just wanted to make sure that, that everybody where, is aware that a helipad is being considered or being requested by UMC for this, for the, for their facility.
So Sal or Jorge, will one of you be reaching out to the Sheriff's Department or should we have them reach out to one of you all?
No, Commissioner, we could reach out to them. Yes.
Thank you.
I think, Commissioner Stout, I think I didn't answer your second question, okay? So let's go back to that one. UMC had expressed interest in trying to go on Loop 375 just because of a, more of a visibility issue and, and, you know, a hospital, I mean, you go to a hospital, I don't think they have to be that visible. It is probably going to be like a two, three, four-story building, I'm assuming. Again, they have not indicated how high or, or any type of dollar for, for the facility, I'm just making some assumptions. For access for, for emergency purposes, I mean, Sevalia is a major roadway, it's a minor arterial roadway, that's going to be a divided, two lanes in each direction with a raised median. Then you have Loop 375, obviously, it's a, a, a one-way, obviously going northbound, but then we also have the access roadway that's going to be providing interior circulation in, within the development. And then you also have access through Sunfire and Pelicano coming down to Sevalia to be able to provide emergency access to the hospital. So I, I really don't think it poses any type of problems or, or it's going to impede fire response or an firefighter ambulance respond to the hospital if we have any commercial development. I mean, but again, this is your direction, you tell us, shift it over, we'll, we'll do whatever this, you know, this body wants and, and we're just here to, we're trying to develop a plan that hopefully reaches the end goal of what the vision is, which is a medical professional, but also hopefully brings back some type of revenue back to the county by either leasing or selling whatever, you know, some commercial activity on the front. If we shift the hospital to the front, pretty much the commercial activity is gone. We will not be able to put commercial in the back. No one wants to go to, you know, they want, the commercial activity wants visibility, you know, they, they, they want to be visible and see so that, you know, not just the existing residential people coming in that area, but people that are passing by will stop by and, you know, shop or do whatever business they have to. So we're here to really take your all's direction. If the direction is do shift it, you know, we'll do what this body wants, not an issue.
Well, I mean, I guess, for me, it's, it's, you know, what is the level of traffic that's there right now? What does it look like getting off on Sevalia? I mean, obviously, that other road is not existent, right? Because it hasn't been built out, but, you know, to me, the, the more important thing is the hospital and, and, you know, the retail is second tier for me, because, you know, that's what this complex is, is for. So, you know, I just want to, I just want to be overly cautious in the planning of, of the site and where the entrances are and where access is to the hospital if we're going to be, because, you know, I can definitely see if, if we have retail on the, on the highway or on, on the highway there, you know, it could, it could get difficult for an emergency vehicle trying to pass by that, you know, people are coming in and out of that retail area, you know, on the, on the, the roadway down at the bottom, or even, you know, even Sevalia, just so, I, I don't know if there's, if there's a way to dedicate a lane or, you know, something that, that, that allows, that will allow for emergency traffic and, and patient access to the hospital without impeachment.
You know, Betsy, I think we really need to be a little bit more, I don't know what the word is, aggressive or assertive on, with respect to UMC, because it looks like it's such a hinge pin that anything that we do is really based around that. So, so if we're going in that direction and then they're not in agreement, they can't get the funding, I, I think that we have a whole set of things that we have to address, because if, if you just look at 40 of the acres, it's for them, that's a, you know, it covers a lot of what we need to do. But if they're not going to be interested in it, I think it just takes off a totally different tangent. So I think that's really important, that, that we get a better understanding of either their commitment or funding or whatever it is, because it's almost like that's the, the anchor for everything else.
So the, the main issue and the reason why we do need to proceed with the plating and the, the zoning is the medical examiner's facility. So we cannot delay our work on the medical examiner facility, because of course, you know, we're going to be tying that to debt. We, we put the design in one portion and put off the construction to the other, another debt issuance, but this is already underway for us and we're going to be on a very tight time schedule to get these projects done. So we need, and, and I want to, I do want to clarify something. If, so UMC has discussed with, with us their plans, like, this is like their second phase of, of capital, not, not what they're currently have been working on, but it would be in there, like their next phase of capital. They do have it as part of a long-term plan. However, our project is now, and if for some reason, UMC did not, were not, were not able, if they were not able to get the funding, there's still other parts of this that could be a medical complex, you're not locked into, even by rezoning, you're not locked into this particular layout. The plating is also can be amended, but, but we need the plating for the medical examiner construction.
Oh, no, we understood that from the beginning, that, that's sort of independent of what we need to do, you know, you gotta get the plating done and then you sort of move from there, but I was just going to be cautious that we don't, the UMC becomes the anchor and then we find ourselves, but, but I agree, that's why I was asking, can you slice off, you know, for example, the medical examiners? I think it's very needed, I mean, we, we've had some big issues with it.
Okay, so flexibility and maybe beginning with the medical examiner's area.
Yes, I, I agree. I, I think that has to be really a big component of our approach.
And I think to provide some flexibility, like where we have the hospital, we just won't identify as a hospital, we'll identify offices, professional, medical clinics, you know, so that UMC doesn't happen for whatever reason, then that can be developed, like Ms. Keller said already, for other uses, professional office or, or medical building or other things.
Yeah, and you know, and Betsy and I have talked a lot about the fact that, that the county needs to now be a little bit more proactive to guide the things that we would like to see in the county. And so I think this is a, a great potential for the, for this project to say, you know, what are the, some of the things that are needed and we can drive that versus I hope these things happen. And we talked even like, there is like Sanelli, for example, that we can either sit there and wait for it to develop or we become proactive and help it develop in, in a particular way. And I think this is a, I don't know, this is a great face for us in the county, but I, but I think we do things well, we're very meticulous about how we do things. So I, I really look forward to, you know, keeping us in tune, and I think that's your intent today was sort of show us the big picture, tell us what we need to do, but I think we have a lot of work to do and, and hopefully every, as many sessions as possible that we, we look at how we're, where we're at at, at certain points. So Jorge, I mean, I think it's a great presentation, great start.
So at this point, Judge and Commissioners, we just asked for direction if we could proceed with how it currently is laid out that way. We don't miss these milestones, because again, the, the caveat is that we want to make sure that this is done prior to the medical offices being submitted because of the construction documents, this has to be in place prior to that. So we just want to make sure we could pursue to the next step with our consultant.
Okay, okay.
And Sal, I'm sending you the email, the contact person at the Sheriff's Office that you can reach out to.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it, thank you. And we'll provide a highlight after we meet with them on, on the outcome of the, the meeting we have with them. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Great project.
Item number six, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the development of a major capital plan for El Paso County, including but not limited to project selections, performance objectives and outcomes, performance management, operational management, and corresponding financial planning and direction. Further, receive a presentation regarding a proposed El Paso County 2023 certificate of obligation portfolio and accompanying information. And just for information, we do have one speaker sign up for this item.
Jessica, you said we have one?
Yes, sir. Would you like to take the public comment now or...
Well, it's, they're here, right?
Yes.
I'd like to do it after.
Okay.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. No, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Morning, Judge Commissioners, Cristian Martinez, County Administration. Here to discuss the county's efforts to provide and plan for major project, major capital needs. This is a, this is a presentation that we have been giving since early December now to the public, to provide the information on what are those major capital needs that, that the county has and what are the approaches that are, that are being proposed for financing those, those needs. So I want to go through this presentation that we've been providing to the public in December and throughout January, for the, for the record and for the benefit of the public and through the special meeting as well. So the first thing that we do at the start of the presentation is, is provide an overview of what is the, what are the county's, what does the county currently do and what is it, how does it currently fund that? So it provides a high-level overview of the county's FY 2023 budget, right? And, and I drop, I draw attention to that top section, that general revenue section, which takes up 80% of the budget, because that is where most county operations are funded through, right? And so, so kind of zooming in and, and you see that total operating budget, right, of 550, almost $555 million, which is relevant when we identify what the need is later in a couple of slides. But zooming in a little bit into that general revenue fund, we break down what that includes and what are the various programs that are funded out of that, right? And in particular, I like to focus on those top three, the administration of justice, general government and public safety, all of which add up to 86% of that general fund. And they all represent programs that are state mandated for the county, right? There are, there are required services that the county provides to the public and includes funding for our district and county courts and offices through the administration of justice, funding for the elected officials' offices in general government who oversee record-keeping tasks such as court case information, birth certificates and marriage licenses, as well as funding for public safety, the sheriff's office, which includes the downtown jail, the Eastside Jail Annex, as well as the Patrol Bureau, and then of course, there's also the juvenile probation department. And I, I draw attention to those three, right, as I said, because they're state mandated and, and because it takes up such a significant portion of that general fund, which means that the funds that we, that the county has available for some of these projects that we're talking about today are much more limited, right? So when you look at those, those, those amounts allocated in public works, culture, recreation, health and welfare, resource development, as well as grant matches, you'll see that those percentages are much lower, right? Following slides really just break down what each of those programs fund, I'll leave it up for just a second, but I did, I did go over these just, just now. And these are, these are the programs and projects that are funded out of those remaining programs within the general fund. So, for years now, the Commissioners Court has led a significant transparency effort with regards to management of public funds and, and the county, and we feel that this is evident and evidenced by the recognition and awards that the county has received by external agencies, such as the Office of the Texas Comptroller, as well as the Government Finance Officers Association. And, and we believe this demonstrates the county's commitment to responsible management of public funds. Other examples of this, of this commitment can be seen here, right? You see, this, this graphic provided to us by the Texas Comptroller's Office shows comparable counties statewide, and amongst those comparable counties, you see that El Paso County has the second lowest debt obligation listed. On a more local level, you can also see the county as it compares to other local taxing entities, wherein the last two years, the county has made up 14 to 15% of the tax rate, right? And these are all things that, that have been diligently planned for in the last couple of years to really focus on minimizing the impact to the taxpayer from the county's perspective. So given that high-level overview, right, of what the county does and how the county has been dedicating itself to, to that responsible management of public funds, we had the task then of identifying, how do we come up with a plan and select projects for prioritizing those needs that the county has had for some time, right? And so this, this process really consisted of three phases, the first of which was identifying and evaluating those projects. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what that, what that consisted of. So there was an existing database, right, of, of project needs that was compiled from a variety of different things, and in working with a lot of those departments that have identified in the past what those needs are, in total, our capital planning office identified a total of 146 individual projects with totaling almost $700 million in need. Now, compare that to the $550, $555 million operating budget that I, I pointed out earlier, and you could see there was, there was a task ahead of us in terms of prioritizing which projects could be funded, right? And this, this really constituted the county's, constitutes the county's major capital plan, right? This is a larger wish list, but the task ahead of us was to prioritize what are the most urgent and essential needs the project has or the county has. So in order to do that prioritization process, each of the projects were evaluated across a variety of criteria, which included determining whether the, how the, the strength of the project's alignment with the strategic plan, whether the county had, or whether the project had received previous funding or effectively reached its end of life, what was the priority coming from those department heads, as well as soliciting your all's input on that project priority and that category priority early, late last year. Throughout this process, in, in those 146 projects, these are the various categories that each of those projects was put into, right? Included public safety, new facilities, parks projects, modernizing existing facilities, some transportation improvements, historical renovation projects, technology projects, and then water, water utility improvements as well. This, and, and this, this doesn't represent all of the project categories that are in the existing priority plan that I'm going to be talking about soon, but for the larger major capital plan. And that's, that's important, right, because it helps us make strategic decisions moving forward, even past the life of these, these finance tools that I'll be getting into soon. So that was phase one, identifying and evaluating those projects. Now phase two involved us assessing what are the tools the county has available for funding some of these projects. These are three types of debt, debt financing tools that, that I want to go over very, very quickly, the first of which is the tax anticipation notes. This is approved by the Commissioners Court, and the, the key distinction here is that it is a shorter-term financing tool, right, with a maturity within seven years, whereas the certificates of obligation are longer-term financing, as you can see on the slide, up to 25 years, also approved by the Commissioners Court. Then lastly, there are the general obligation bonds. These are bonds that are approved by voters, typically include quality-of-life-type projects such as new county facilities. This is a, this is a graph prepared by, by Steve Ol, the county's public, the county's financial advisor, and really the, the key idea and the key component I want to draw attention to here is that orange arrow you see at the top left, right? Because you see that, and this is something that the county has been planning for some time and expecting now, that the county would be paying off several, several loans and debts. time and expecting now, that the county would be paying off several, several loans and debts, right, in the coming years. And what that would do is open the county's capacity for taking on new debt, taking on new debt without raising the tax rate, right? And, and so you'll see that as the years go on, each of those colors represents different payments that the county has. And we really like to kind of liken it to, you know, the average, the average homeowner who maybe is making a car payment, and that car payment, let's say you finished paying off your car, you take that amount of money in that monthly payment that you had, and now dedicate that towards making some much-needed repairs to your home, right? And, and that's kind of, that's kind of the comparison we're using here. And to build on that, you can see that here in this next graphic, right? In that orange oval, you can see, that orange oval represents the county's debt capacity that, that is coming up as a result of paying off those debts, right? And that orange line represents the, the maximum amount that the county, debt that the county can take on without increasing the tax rate. And in doing so, the county identified $100 million in debt capacity without increasing that tax rate.
Sure, Commissioner?
You had, I think, a couple of slides where it, it indicates how much El Paso County owes us compared to other counties? Yeah, that one right there. And I've mentioned it to you before, that is astounding, the debt that El Paso has as compared to other counties in Texas. And I've got to say, ever since when I came on the, the court here in 2013, we've been looking at that, and I just want to emphasize this to, to our audience and the people that are virtual, that this is why it has given us the opportunity to, because one of the things you've seen over and over, that our taxes are going to go up and they're not for this reason right here. So, excuse me, El Paso, El Paso County in particular, has been very, very frugal with our funds, with taxpayer funds, to allow this to, to happen. And this only magnifies what you're going over right now. I just want to make it as, as plain as I can
Oh, thank you.
...to our, our public there to, to realize that, that, that's a, that's a tremendous feat where El Paso's at right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you emphasizing that.
Good point, Commissioner.
And, and to your point, it does kind of, it does build on, on what we're discussing already here, right? And, and knowing, recognizing that this, this moment, that this opportunity was coming up through careful financial planning to allow for taking on these, this potential debt capacity without raising the, the tax rate and always kind of keeping in mind and focusing on minimizing the impact to the taxpayer, right? So, once these debt tools were evaluated, the next, the next step involved presenting our findings, right? And, and this is the process we've been engaged with over the last couple of months. With regards to the public, and starting in December, as I mentioned earlier, we started phase one of that public engagement series, working with each, working within each of the precincts to provide this information with, on what the projects are, what the debt financing tools are being proposed as. Presentation was given to the court on December 12th, where the Commissioners Court authorized publishing a notice of intent for these debt financing tools, which I'll speak to in more detail in the coming slides. And then we're currently in phase two of that public engagement series. Notably, next Monday, the court will consider a $41 million tax note approval, followed the next Monday, the week after that, by a $59 million certificate of obligation sale authorization.
Sure.
Here's a breakdown of, of that, of those amounts and those projects that fell within them. So you'll see at that, at that very top category, that tax anticipation note includes all of the public safety infrastructure projects that I'll be showing you all, a listing of in just a couple of slides, or I believe in the next slide. Whereas the, the remaining $59 million includes regional transportation projects, modernizing existing county facilities, park renovations, as well as technology projects. All of that will fall under that $59 million certificate of obligation that is being considered by the court on the 30th. Now you'll see that at the bottom there, that that total $111 million is more than the $100 million that I talked about earlier. And the reason for that is really because this total includes any alternate projects that we've identified as well, just in case any, some, some alternative source of funding is identified for any of these projects at any point, or any, any potential issue, we're prepared to kind of begin with any, with some alternative projects as quickly as possible. So the, the number is capped at $100 million. The $111 million just includes those alternate, alternate projects. So here's the list of projects being considered for that tax anticipation note on this upcoming Monday with regards to public safety. I, we've, we've, we've worked closely with some of those departments to kind of speak very closely on, on what those projects are and what the project needs are and why they need them. So what I'm going to be doing now, instead of going one by one with each of them, is playing a couple, several videos from each of the relevant department heads, discussing that need and what those projects are.
The jail here basically holds all pre-detain, or all detainees who are waiting in courts. We house here anywhere from 1,800 inmates, a total of almost over 3,000 inmates. So we are pretty packed here at this jail facility. Well, we need to keep the lights on. We need to make sure that we are always at 100% ready for anything as far as electrical, fire, we need to be able to respond to anything. We need these systems to be running at all times, because if, for whatever reason, lights go out in the city of El Paso, we need to make sure that our generators are ready to function. Our fire alarm, of course, we can have fires where we work in a jail. Fires go off, we need to make sure our alarms are responding accurately and correctly and quickly, so that we can have the personnel to respond to the actual fires immediately as well. As far as what would happen if our lights and everything went down, then unfortunately we would have to notify TCJS. At that time, TCJS stands for Texas Commission on Jail Standards. We'd have to notify them, they would have to probably come in, find out what's going on, and we would maybe have to move our inmates out of this facility, because TCJS does mandate us on a certain level that we need to make sure that we provide everything for them. They actually have some really high standards that we need to meet every year. If we fail to meet any of their standards, then we can actually be potentially closed down. That could mean that we would have to move a bunch of inmates downtown and after that, possibly going to other counties.
The Juvenile Justice Center in El Paso is dedicated to providing services to all youth referred by our local law enforcement entities for having committed delinquent acts. Our goal is to rehabilitate the youth in our community by providing them quality, community-based services and intervention services. With that being said, we have a 60-bed detention facility, as well as a 40-bed residential facility here in our community. We are tasked for, to ensure that we provide an environment that is safe and secure for the children that are ordered to remain here in our premises. We are licensed by the Texas Juvenile Justice Department as a residential facility, as well as our detention facility. So being a certified facility, we are required to maintain our building up to specs, to ensure that we are housing all of the youth that are ordered to us in a safe environment. With that being said, we are subject to being audited by the state, which we are on a yearly basis. Obviously, we need to ensure that they're in a safe environment where all components of our building are in functioning order. What we have been experiencing after the rains here in our department, in particular where our probation officers are housed, we have a lot of leaks, a lot of buckets are scattered throughout the building, and there is a very strong odor of humidity and a strong odor of, it kind of smells like a mildewy type of smell. And we have a lot of staff with allergies that are complaining of allergies because how wet the insulation becomes in the roof. So it's, it's, it's not a healthy environment for our staff to, to be working in. So we have made the decision to close down or shut down almost 20 offices and relocate our staff to either a teleworking type of environment or a hoteling type of environment when they have to be here for their court hearings or to meet with families. And it's not an ideal situation because they do need their, their workspace to be able to conduct their business, but we felt that the health and the safety of our staff was priority. So we've had to make those adjustments. Our, we're an aging facility. This facility has been in existence for, for about 35 years now. Our sewer system is cast iron. We're running the risk of it collapsing, and that would be extraordinarily detrimental to the housing of the youth that are ordered to remain here. We also, in our central control here in our Challenge Academy, we have a pretty large area that, where we have leak, where we have our fire panels, our security panels, we have cameras, we have video screens where we're monitoring our security system, where the leaks are in very close proximity, and that is very concerning to us because if that costly equipment is wet, we're going to have equipment failure. And that equipment failure is going to be extraordinarily costly to our county government. For the community, what that would mean, or for the taxpayers, is we would not be able to house the children in our facility. That could potentially mean that we would have to ship our kids to other counties and pay in excess of $200 to $300 a day to house children that have been ordered by the court to remain in a, in a secure environment such as the one that we have here in El Paso.
Those, those projects discussed and shown in the previous slide, right, all fall under that $41 million tax anticipation note. The remaining project listings that you'll see in the, in the next few slides would all fall under that $59 million certificate of obligation, started by these, these regional transportation and technology projects you see listed here. And we have another set of videos from, from another set of videos, and I'll allow those project managers and department heads to speak to the, to the projects in those videos now.
What this project is entitled to do is to go ahead and replace all the, the failing asphalt that we've already overlaid, the 8.2 miles of roadway, and create a new four-lane divided roadway connecting back Horizon down to Montana Vista. The overall goal is to create a, a new four-lane roadway, which will not only improve safety, lighting, and so by creating this four-lane separated highway, we're also removing the, the safety concerns and the risk, and also improving the lighting along the roadway that we're going to be constructing. As part of the county maintenance plan, we do come out here and repair potholes in order to alleviate any safety concerns that are occurring within the pavement. Any degradation along the, the areas are repaired. We remove the asphalt in the surrounding area. We cut out a little section to extend past the deteriorated area and then pour new asphalt. What we've done is we've done a temporary bypass on the sides, which will be the, the new roadway that we constructed. So we've officially shut down the, the roadway from the north part of Horizon, which is the original two miles that we've done. And we've shifted the roadway traffic out to the newly constructed outer lanes, which will be the outer lanes of the four-lane divided highway. Because of the, the accelerated need that we, for this project, we went ahead and solicited a new, new consultant to be able to do the design for the entire eight-mile stretch.
About five years ago, the county established its first airport capital improvement plan, ACIP, and that was in partnership with Tech dot. From there, we were able to identify several projects, rehab of the runways, new lighting, security fence around the airport, and restriping of the illuminations and, and the runway and tax lanes. With the partnership with Tech dot also, we were also able to create our first airport business development plan, which identified our, our, our short-term, midterm and long-term goals here at the airport. And with the capital improvement funds that we received, we were able to start identifying and, and getting some of these projects under design and some under in construction as far as getting the, the long-hanging fruit and then build up for the, the larger projects. The biggest issue that we have right now is the county airport only has one hangar. And this hangar previously was utilized for day-to-day operations, maintenance, mechanical issues that the, our FBO would fix. But because that, that hangar is now being leased to UTIP, which is another partner that we have, that kind of left us kind of shorthanded on, on the hangars. And shortly after that, with all these improvements happening here at the county, we were getting a lot of calls from local and passengers and, and folks that are, are just kind of driving across country, asking for hangar space. And that became an issue because, you know, we only have one, one hangar and it's already being utilized. Again, these are the projects that were identified in the airport business development plan, where the, our D-SAL lane as the entry in the airport, that was designed and constructed with the partnership with the CRMA, using local funds. We were also able to secure some funding from the capital improvement to be able to start the design on these hangars. We also secured some funding from a grant that we went after, the EDA grant. It was about a little over $5 million. That even added us the construction money that we needed to be able to, to not only design, but also help construct at least one or two hangars that are critically needed at this time.
These are the projects within the modernizing existing county facilities category that would also fall within that $59 million certificate of obligation being considered on January 30th. Because these cover a variety of departments, we don't have a, a video specific to this one, but we do have a video for the next slide, which are our projects within the, the park renovations listing. So I'll allow Parks Director Veronica Myers to speak to those projects, and that is our final video.
The lake is the key, and it has been identified as a number-one priority in our master plan, right? Which was conducted not only by, by an assessment of professionals, but it was also identified by the public. This is one of the only, only lakes in the area that is this big 50 acres of, of lake that we have here, between the, the big lake and the, and the duck pond. And so it has never been dredged in the past almost 100 years that it's existed. There's now just feet of, of silt and debris that has accumulated, making it very shallow. It being so shallow, then you can just imagine what happens in the spring, right? The weeds grow really, really uncontrollably, and that becomes a maintenance issue for us, right? Trying to maintain it, making sure that, that we clean it up as much of it as possible because, you know, some vegetation needs to stay for the, for the, for the fish as well, for the aquatic life. Improve some of the, the operations on it, like the, like the erator that you see right here to my right, to something that is larger, that will provide more oxygen to the lake. This is a man-made lake, right, that was done way back in the 1930s, 1935, by a Corps of Engineers. And so it needs to be dredged so, every so often. And since it hasn't been done in almost 100 years, right, there's a lot of debris. And so the cost of this is not just dredging it, but also removing that debris off-site. All the debris that is falling into the lake right now, right? Some of the rock walls are falling into the lake. And so you can just imagine with the high winds that we have here in El Paso, right? All of that debris and dirt and all of that ends up in the, inside the lake. The area that we're talking about is the Old Western Playland area. That is 10 acres that was left behind and was left in, in poor condition and continued to deteriorate in, in the past almost 20 years that that area has been vacated. There are bathrooms that were left there that are not functioning, so we would like to make them functionable. There's also a Grand Prix building that is just there as well, that we want to make into actual bathroom office facilities for events that, that we can have here and public use. into actual bathroom office facilities for events that we can have here in public use.
That concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions you all may have or any comments that you all have at this time. I do believe Director of Capital Planning Jose Landeros is also on the virtual call for any questions as well.
Jose, go ahead and if there's any additional comments, and then we'll hear from our public comments.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners, Jose Landeros of the County Administration. This series of public engagement that we've had this past month has been incredibly helpful to share information. We've had a lot of residents come up to us and tell us that they're appreciative of the information and the work. We've had some who disagree on elements of the project, but definitely appreciate the efforts that the county is going to, to share this information with them. In addition to the public meetings that we've held, that many of you have had a chance to attend or your staff, we've also been presenting to a variety of civic organizations, including the West Rotary, Rotary Club West, Sunrise Rotary Club. We've also presented to the chamber, the El Paso Chamber, both their infrastructure and mobility groups, as well as their board of directors. We're actually presenting to them this afternoon. And then we'll be presenting to the El Paso Hispanic Chambers Board next week as well. And so we are very glad to have had the opportunity to connect with folks at this point. And we'll provide any information about what that feedback looks like when the court is considering action on any of these items in the coming weeks. But wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to share this presentation with the court. This is just another opportunity for us to get this information out in a public setting and in a regularly established meeting, which was one of our strategies. Instead of trying to create new meeting spaces, instead try to capitalize on places where people are already ready to be there. So it's been very, you know, it's given us some fuel to keep going, especially when you hear folks tell us, you know, "We don't agree with you, but we like the ideas, we like the transparency." And it's been very helpful. So I want to thank you again for all your support and look forward to continuing the court's consideration of these items in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Jose. So go ahead, Jessica, we want to call her for public comment.
Yes, we have Mr. Christopher Falk here to speak on this item.
Welcome.
For the record, my name's Christopher Falk, and I attended on January 11th, the meeting at Escarte Park. And I was under the assumption that today's meeting was going to be the same type of informal meeting, and some of the same players would be here, like Ms. Veronica Myers, members of the fishing club, and of course, this gentleman from the county who did a magnificent job at Escarte Park. And we all learned a lot about everything, the fishing club. I found out both lakes are going to be included in this. Not only are we going to dredge and redo the Big Lake, but also we're going to redo the Small Lake also, maybe have an engineering firm or a design firm, go the whole nine yards on the Small Lake, which of course it really needs, you know, from the last time I was here. And there was one person at the meeting in Escarte Park thought maybe the trail around the Big Lake should be accessible to wheelchairs. You know, you can't, I think it already is, you know, because the gravel they have now is so compacted. And after that meeting, I have walked at the park and I've looked at that. It's not really sandy. It's a compacted surface. But putting asphalt in, you know, and you can Google this like I did today, on 100-degree day, which is basically all summer long, asphalt gets up to 160 degrees. And it's, I've walked the playa drain trail that we actually put money in. Part of it's concrete, part of it's asphalt. And I have hiking boots on with Vibram soles. They're pretty thick. I can feel, like on July 20th, I always walk on that trail, you can feel the heat from the asphalt during the day through your boots. So, and there's another problem too, is if we did pave the trail around the lake, it would become a racecourse for skateboarders and bicyclists. We already have right now, even though it's compacted gravel, a person on Sundays who actually races around there. And this last Sunday, he gave me a wide berth, like eight, but before, he's come very close to me and other walkers. So I think having anything but like a decomposed granite like it is now, where you have to have thicker tires, you know, to do it, you can't have 10-speed tires. And you can't have a skateboard on gravel either, you know, it's not firm enough for a skateboard. Would be a mistake. I think something can be worked out. And also, since the Small Lake is right by the All Disabilities Playground, the trail around that lake, you know, we could have a ramp and that could be made for people in wheelchairs. You know, I think that'd be a great thing to do that and have some kind of, not concrete or asphalt, but maybe like a flagstone in concrete around it and a ramp up to it. I think that's a great idea. And from what I know, both the fishing club and public comment will have a lot of input when the Small Lake is planned. So that's a great thing. The only other thing that we didn't discuss last week, and like I said, it was a great meeting, was this Escarte Park idling paving. And I imagine that's that little, before you get to the, you know, the golf shop parking, you know, there's a rural area there where a canal goes around it. That's rock and coarse gravel. And I've been there when it rains. It's not, it's not like a rain hazard or anything. It's, I think introducing asphalt, other than, you know, being so temperature, would make it more like some kind of mall parking lot, you know, instead of being a rural county park, where people go, a lot of fishermen go there. So they're like they're outdoors. You know, it's like, you know, you're going to drive up in your truck instead of for fishing, and it's asphalt. It's not, you know, it's not like you're outdoors, which a lot of people go to the park for that reason. You know, it's in the middle of the city, and they want to get away from the city and just fish. You know, a lot of people don't care if they catch anything because, you know, they can look at the water, look at the lake, trees and birds. So I think we should keep that in mind on any improvements to the park, that a lot of people go there to get away from the hubbub of the city, that it's a county rural park and people like that. So that's all I have to say. I plan on being here on the 30th to speak in favor of the COs, a certificates of obligation, because I think this is a great thing for other projects, but also for the parks. So, thank you.
No, we thank you. Great insights. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That was the only public comment we had for this item.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jose. Everyone else, Christopher. Betsy, any additional comments or are we okay at this point?
Judge Commissioners, just thank you all so much for guiding us to have this public process and to our team. It's been really great to be out in the community, hearing from them, as Jose mentioned. And while Jose focused on those, maybe or mentioned those who don't agree, I know, I was saying that Christiane and I were at one evening event up until 7 o'clock at night. Everybody there was really actually positive and supportive. And then the next morning, we went to a Rotary at 7:00. And there, they were very, I mean, I was, because I also saw UMC present to the same Rotary, but our approach just, it's been really well-received and positive feedback from the community. And so we appreciate this support. Also, our communications team had prepared a publication, and it's been out in the newspaper. We're working to also get out, to add a session and get out that notice also, and add a session that would be done in Spanish. And so those members of our community who may prefer that as their language will have a session for that faction of the community. And we're working on that and getting it advertised in El Diario. So we're really, really proud of the work that our team has been leading under your guidance. So thank you so much.
You know, I liked this, I mean, we've been doing that, but this idea of going where people are already meeting, because I think the last time, you know, we didn't have as much of a participation, but going to the Rotarys, going to the Optum, is going to, and I think we should build sort of like a network of the organizations that are very open to that, because some of them, you know, have 70, 80 people already there. So we take advantage of that feedback. So I thought that was a great additional component, Christopher. Okay, well, we thank you. Thank you, Christopher. Thank you so much. Jose, thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Thank you.
I'll take no action for item number six. Item number seven, receive a presentation and updates on the county's 2023 through 2027 strategic plan.
Welcome, Dr. Madrigal.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Lisa Madrigal with County Administration. Today, I'm honored to be here with you as we prepare for our upcoming strategic planning retreat, and would like to take this opportunity to update you on the current projects that our department heads have been working on in preparation for the retreat. I'd like to add that the three previous presentations have laid the context and important background information for the presentation. And I also want to make a correction. Apparently, I've been working on this presentation since 2022, since the date should be 2023. Just picked that up. Strategic planning is a crucial tool for local government leaders, providing a roadmap for decision-making, resource allocation, that aligns to the county's needs and goals. This update enables county leaders to anticipate and respond to changing conditions and opportunities, ensuring efficient and effective service delivery while fostering transparency and accountability by effectively communicating the county's vision, mission, goals, objectives, and initiatives to residents, stakeholders, and other partners. El Paso County Government's vision and mission aligns with several key goals to improve our lives for our residents. The nine strategic goals set by the court include leading justice reform, transforming economic development, increasing tourism, upgrading infrastructure, promoting collaboration and engagement, advancing community support, valuing El Paso County family, strengthening financial health, and optimizing internal processes. The current strategic plan is a comprehensive document that outlines our vision, mission, core values, as well as strategic goals, objectives, activities that will help us achieve our initiatives. The plan includes nine goals, 46 objectives, and 95 milestone activities. The strategic plan is regularly reviewed and updated to ensure that it continues to reflect the most current information that we have in making measurable progress towards our objectives. We have been able to make substantial progress in a relatively short period of time by focusing our priorities, allocating resources effectively, and tracking our progress regularly. In our five-year plan, we set out specific goals, objectives, and milestone activities to achieve our initiatives in the strategic plan. Department heads and their staff have been working hard to implement these initiatives, and I'm pleased to report that we have accomplished 12% of our five-year plan in just 5% of the time lapse. This is a significant achievement and a testament to the dedication and hard work of our epic team. The early success is a promising indication that we are on track to achieve the goals and objectives within the planned timeframe, and will continue to work hard to ensure that we maintain the momentum and deliver the results that benefit our community. I'd like to briefly explain the framework I used to update you on the current strategic plan initiatives. We have developed a framework that provides a clear and comprehensive understanding of the work ahead. Projects in Phase One are in the planning stage where research and analysis are being conducted. Phase Two projects require direction and approval from the court and may also require budget allocation. Phase Three includes projects that are procurement-related activities. Phase Four projects that have been implemented. And lastly, Phase Five are ongoing projects or activities that have been completed. The goal of lead justice reform is to encourage our justice system that operates fairly inequitably, ensuring the dignity and humanity of those interacting with the system, and that defendants' constitutional rights are protected while the public safety is enhanced. To achieve this goal, the county has set several objectives and milestones, which include an expanded mental health crisis intervention team expansion. This is, this project is a carryover from fiscal year 2022. And the focus for this activity is a program evaluation. And it's, this project is in Phase Five. Public safety. The objective of public safety includes three activities, the Regional Law Enforcement Training Center exploration and the UTEP crime immigration study, both of which are in Phase One. The third project under public safety focus is the El Paso County Growth Management Report and Implementation, which was implemented and is also a carryover from fiscal year 2022. Objective Three, only incarcerate those that are high-risk to public safety, has, is in Phase Four, and the focus is to continue the recivatism study, the risk assessment validation study, and the presentation, recumment, and direction from the court. Objective Four is reduce poverty-based incarceration, and this program is also in Phase Four, and it's the indigent defense electronic monitoring system. And lastly, and under Objective Five, lead plan for and address justice infrastructure includes three activities. The first one is a reentry facility detox diversion center and a needs assessment, which is in Phase Three, as well as a jail processing center remodel. Develop an animal shelter and job training program to jail annex. This activity is in Phase One, in the early planning phases. In summary, 66% of the workload either is either in procurement, has been implemented, or is ongoing. I should note that 33% of activities are in Phase One. The goal of focused economic development is to create growth, increase commercial development and values, raise incomes, and improve the overall well-being of our citizens. To achieve this goal, the county has several objectives and corresponding milestones. The first objective is develop broadband. We have two activities, milestone activities, under this objective. Broadband improvements, we need the direction, partnership, and funding, and this money has been allocated from ARPA funds, and they are in Phase Three. Wi-Fi in all county parks, direction and funding is in Phase One. Objective Two, develop and implement impactful focused economic development strategy. And this includes this, under this objective, there's two activities, refine and highlight economic development policy, which is in Phase Two, port of entry crossing expanded use, specifically research other ports of entry and models related to the land development. This project is in Phase One. Objective Three is to recover economically from COVID-19 pandemic. There are four initiatives under this objective. The first one is loan forgiveness funds, which is often referred to as Faster Program 2.0. External and nonprofit agency notice, funding the NOFO. We're moving into the quarterly monitoring of the funds that were expended and provided to the community. The third activity is industry-specific programs, looking at other successful community models. This program is, or this activity is in Phase One. Lastly, we have the childcare initiative, which is an initiative that has, is being spearheaded by the Borderplex, and this one is in Phase One. Objective Four, focus on existing smaller businesses and microenterprises and entrepreneurs to support innovative hub-like resources, is in Phase One. And they're looking at technical assistance for smaller businesses. Objective Five is focusing on attracting higher-wage industries. This is also in Phase One, and the focus is identify regional industry clusters that present resilience and produce long-lasting skillset for employees. Lastly, under Objective Six, the Fabians Airport has become a Lastly, under Objective Six, the Fabian's Airport has become a major regional airport and aerospace economic development. There are two initiatives under this specific objective. The first one is Fabian's Airport Aerospace Development Strategy and developing land around the airport to support airport aerospace growth and economic development.
Dr. Madrigal?
Yes, sir.
When we look at the money that was provided, the Build Back Better, you know, the 40 million, are we looking at, like, I feel like, and I talked to, I had a meeting with Dr. Shadari, and like, it's sort of moving away, like, I mean, we really need to position ourselves and sort of request more, like, what are some of the things that, that, you know, that we thought we were getting when that happened, and then a lot of it is sort of shifting into the city. So, just to be very aware of, of, you know, when we look, it's not something we're just going to sit there and wait to see, and hopefully that we get some of the money, but the conversation I had with him is that we have to start really requesting, you know, this is what we could do, and this is how we can be part of that, of that grant that was given. So, anyway, I don't know if there's any, if you've had any connection with that, with that grant.
I have not had any connection, but we could definitely look at the aim of the grant and look at those objectives and see how the county could align to what the specified aims are and provide that information prior to our strategic planning retreat.
Because it's moving pretty fast, so, you know, whatever we could do, I know Commissioner Olgin is also very interested, myself, to make sure that we get our, you know, our lion's share of that money that, because they utilized our facility as part of the, of the argument or the basis for the grant.
As an anchor.
But they came back and modified the grant. So, you may recall, the grant was for more than what we received, and so they cut back the grant amount and cut out our, our major portion of our ask.
But in the meetings we've had, I mean, it's still not up for grabs, but, I mean, there's still opportunity for petitioning, you know, some of the way they're going to use the money, some of the infrastructure. So, I just want to make sure that we just don't settle with the idea that, that we were cut off a little bit and then we're completely off the grant money, because I don't think that should be the case.
Okay. I do know that UTEP is applying for a separate grant, another grant that is more focused for us, but it's not nearly the amount. Of course, it doesn't have nearly the amount that was available in the Build Back Better grant. So, you, Judge, are you saying that out of the money that UTEP has received, it's not fully allocated or that they're designated to receive?
When we spoke to one of the main person there that came down here, that we met, Congresswoman Escobar, myself, there seemed to be, like, certain conceptual things that they wanted that infrastructure and how to happen, and maybe there's opportunities for us to, to argue that point, that we're part of that, that, those things that they, that need to happen. You know, we're a collateral part of that project, but I don't know, I just, it was sort of...
I thought the majority of the spending for that project was going to be for a facility that's by the El Paso Airport.
It is.
The city's airport.
And they've already, they've already secured it? They've already, so, that's why I'm wondering whether it's, it's something we need to work on with UTEP or if it's, more funding is available.
Well, like I said, I spoke to Dr. Shadari and Congressman Tim, can't think his name again.
Ryan.
Pardon me?
Congressman Ryan.
Who, I think they're going to contract him, and he was, you know, he has a lot of knowledge about aerospace, and so we had that conversation about, you know, do we, is there anything that we could do to be a collateral component of what they're trying to do at the airport? Are there some synergisms that might take place? So, that was a conversation, and this was, I guess, Thursday, Betsy, that, that had that meeting. So, anyway, just, I'm not just willing to say, okay, this is going to happen, but that we can play a collateral. There's things that they have to do that might be able to happen at the airport as well, that can be a support for their project, and so that was a conversation. So, it sort of opened my eyes up that maybe we just can't assume that the money is strictly for them and not some collateral opportunities.
In regards to Goal Two, milestone activities are spread between Phase One and Phase Four, with the majority of work taking place in Phase One. So, the majority of work under Goal Two is in the planning, studies, and analysis phase. Goal Three focuses on increasing tourism by investing in and promoting the county's valuable assets, highlighting the region's rich history, and showcasing its cultural heritage and diversity. There are five objectives under this goal, this goal. The first, the first objective has two milestone activities. The first one is the Coliseum Event Study, the next phase of that study, specifically determining the county should proceed with expanded, with an expanded study by the consultant for Coliseum improvements, and host two community meetings to launch a survey to, again, obtain public input. The second project under this specific objective is better customer stewardship, and the next steps on, to move forward this activity, is to identify successful programs and models in other communities that include a focus on customer service and hospitality. Objective Two is better, is invest in heritage and sports tourism to increase tourism. We have six activities that were identified by the court during the last strategic planning session. The first one is bike venues, exploration, and present information to the court. Martial arts contact sport expansion, both of those activities are in Phase One. We have a, the next activity is county-wide historic mass, asset master plan, or CHAMPs. We need direction, funding, and award bid. This, this specific project is in Phase Two, and it covers about 56 miles from Torneo to Vinton, the scope of the project, or the scope of work specific to this activity. Activity, the next activity is 324, and this is a county-wide historic building survey, which, again, covers that 56-mile span from Vinton to Torneo. The next activity focuses on heritage tourism expansion strategy action plan, and this is identifying opportunities and the application process, identifying opportunities, application process, and then links to community events, how to expand on those. The last activity under this objective is community festivals expansion, and this one's specific to conducting a needs assessment, reports with options, county role, partners, and direction and funding. This specific project is in Phase One. Objective Three is implementing the Mission Trails Master Plan. This project is in Phase Two and is specific to presentation, direction, and funding, and it focuses on the Slata Mission, Socorro, and, sorry, and, 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 objective four is focused on, this is, sorry. Ascot at the Park, develop the park, make it the heart of the county, and the destination venue and impact economic development. There is one specific activity under this objective, and it's focused on Ascot at the Park Restaurant and Lake Development, identifying the county role and county actions and how it is outlined in the park's master plan. This project is in Phase One. Objective Five, accelerate the amphitheater study. The next phase is a presentation, direction, and funding from the court, specific to the findings of the study.
We've actually already done that presentation. It's next day, phase is funding.
The funding. Identify specific funding to move forward. All of the activities under Goal Three, 64% are in Phase One, and 36% require direction and approval from the court. This means that the, that the majority of activities under Goal Three are in the early stages of development. Next, we have upgrade infrastructure, and Ms. Norma Rivera Palacios made, asked me to ensure that you, that I mentioned that this goal has the most activity under it. We have 20 milestone activities under Goal Four. The objective of Goal Four is to upgrade infrastructure, is to enhance business climate, establish sustainable neighborhoods, and enhance connectivity. The court has identified five objectives and 20 activities to accomplish this. These activities include, under Objective One, build infrastructure, including parks, to meet the needs of the community. We have two activities related to parks under Objective One, new parks and trails construction, and, again, both of these are based upon the park's master plan and Ascot at the Park development. We have utility infrastructure to county neighborhoods, goals, direction, project priorities, and funding. That project is in Phase Three. County Annex Plan, desired outcomes, report with options and locations, directions, and funding. This is in Phase Two, and you saw a presentation related to this earlier today. The next activity under this objective is Stormwater Management Plan, Policy and Projects, Review, Select Project Priority, Direction, and Funding. That project is also in Phase Two. The Sidewalk Project, Direction and Funding is in Phase One, and the OME, ARPA-funded project, it's not, well, actually, parts of it is ARPA-funded, project for new facility is in Phase Three. County Park Safety and Service Facility Study, Recommendations and Direction from the Court, is in Phase Two, and the last activity under this objective is Downtown ITN Whining Project. Independent Analysis and Ongoing Monitoring of that project is in Phase One. Invest in Existing Facilities. We have, under this objective, the County Jail Facility Study and Ascot at the Park Upgrade Project, which both are in Phase Two. The Westlake Park Development, we need direction and funding, is in Phase One, as well as a park irrigation system asset upgrade for Ascot at the Park. Continuing with Goal Four, we have invest in foundational technology. We have three milestone activities under this objective. The first one is enabling data-driven decision-making, and what the work under this specific milestone is identify and create an inventory of available county data repositories. Under Public Safety Technology Sourcing and Voice Over IP, Cable and Infrastructure and Implementation, both of those projects are in Phase Two. The County Annex Plan, which is the fourth objective under Upgrade of Infrastructure, is focused on County Annex Plan, Desired Outcomes, Report with Options and Locations, Direction and Funding. The County Annex Plan, Desired Outcomes, Report with Options is the focus of this specific activity, and it's in Phase One. Lastly, we have Upgrade Infrastructure, Enhance Green Infrastructure, County Government, Community Sustainability for Low-Impact Development. We have two activities under this. The first one is the Tire Pickup, Disposal, and Enforcement Action Plan, and the next one is the Green Infrastructure Climate Change Action Plan, Research Best Practice, Report with Options, Directions, and Funding. Goal Four, the majority of activities are in the development stages, sorry, with 45% in Phase One, 45% in Phase Two, and only 10% of projects related to infrastructure are in the procurement-related activities or Phase Three. The objective of Goal Five is to foster collaborative and engagement to drive, improve outcomes, deliver top-notch service, and establish robust relationships. To achieve this, various initiatives are being implemented, such as ADA Social Media Online and Website Accessibility, which falls under Objective One, collaborate externally to achieve better outcomes, Public Defender's Community Outreach Program, and the Healing and Strengthening Communities to Retrospective Justice for Juveniles. All of those three projects under Phase One. Objective Two is collaborate regionally and internationally. We have the Bignational Strategy and Action Plan, New Public Health Model with City Joint Board, exploration of both those projects, and the Municipal ID Project. These three projects are in Phase One. Next, we have collaborate internally to increase cohesion and be able to obtain results. We have the County Process Improvement Initiative, related to implementing the Ballrich Framework to provide best-in-class service to our community through efficient and effective processes. This is in Stage Four, or Phase Four. And lastly, we have Expand Database Decision Making Through Seeking Feedback and Information from Our Community. This is our Community Engagement Strategy and Action Plan. We implemented the first community engagement survey in preparation for strategic planning last year. We had about 300 responses. This year, we have close to 800 responses, so we doubled the responses in the second year, and I'll share the outcomes of that survey before our strategic planning. We're, I'm currently compiling that report. Most of the activities under Goal Five, 88%, to be specific, are in planning and research phase. The remaining 12% of activities have progressed to the implementation phase. This means that the majority of activities under Goal Five are in the early stages of development, and only a small percentage have been implemented. Goal Six is, the aim of Goal Six is to advance community support services, is to address the needs of marginalized communities, reduce poverty, and promote social mobility. To achieve this, seven objectives were identified, including increasing security and sheriff patrols in outlying areas. The activity under Objective One is El Paso Growth Management Report and Implementation, which is linked to another activity under Goal One. Next, I have Develop a Strategic Plan for Affordable Housing and Services for the Homeless. The activity under this specific objective is in Phase One, and it relates to the Homeless Strategy Community Action Plan, and this is an activity that is in collaboration with Solutions Borderplex in providing employment to justice-involved, involved individuals, release plans, and referrals pre- and post-release from El Paso County jails. Objective Three, Develop and Implement Programs to Eradicate Poverty and Increase Social Mobility, includes six activities. The first one is identify gaps in healthcare and healthcare access and identify county's role and plan in addressing these gaps. Work with UMC and other partners to collect information available on healthcare gaps. This specific activity is in Phase One. The Pet Wellness Clinic is Develop Financial Plan for Operations. This activity is in Phase Four. Next, we have the Health Program Expansion, which is the HFFI program, Direction and Funding, launch the FHHI marketing campaign, and prompt increased business participation, and engage with regional donors. This is, program has been implemented and is in Phase Two. Nutrition Kitchens, Design Directions, and County Actions. The next step for this specific activity is to identify a location for the nutrition kitchen, and that specific project is in Phase One. The Alameda Project is in Phase Two, and the next step is secure funding for, to move forward with the next step in the development. Sure, it's regarding the Alameda Project were presented to the court earlier, this, in the previous fiscal year. The last activity under Objective Three is Recreational Opportunities Expansion at Rural Community Run Centers, Direction and Funding, and this is identifying grant opportunities to expand those services and staffing. And under Objective Four, Create Digital Library and Promote Library. The library is, has been established, and the next steps, the librarian is trying to seek accreditation through the Texas State Library Archives and Commission. Objective Five focuses on Support for Workforce Readiness Plan. The Workforce Readiness Plan for the Homeless and Justice Involved is a partnership with the Workforce Solutions Borderplex to provide employment for justice-involved individuals via release plans and referrals, again, pre- and post-release from El Paso County jails. This project is in Phase One. Objective Six is Expand the Public Transit. This, the project under this specific objective is in Phase One, and it focuses on expanding public transit system, present the final report to the El Paso Area Transportation Services before moving to the implementation phase of this project. And under Objective Seven, Be Recognized as a Capital of the USA, the Veterans' Capital of the USA, where every day is a great day to be a veteran in El Paso County. We have two specific objectives. The first one relates to the Veterans Assistance Resource Center Department, which seeks direction, funding, and of leased space, compared lease options for community partners, specifically Emergence Health Network and Endeavors, and that update was provided October of 2022. And the second objective is also in Phase One, which is the And the second objective is also in Phase One, which is the Reentry Veterans Assistance Resource Development, and Develop a Reentry Veteran Cell Block at the El Paso County Jail Annex as an extension of Project Chance.
Dr. Madrigal?
Yes, sir.
I know you were at that last meeting, and, you know, we shifted a little bit more, and it'll give me an opportunity also for commissioners here and in our audience, is that one of the biggest challenges that we have is that we already have individuals working on gaps, right? And that's not primarily our lane in what we're trying to do, the Veterans' Capital of the USA, but it's actually the promotion of, and the marketing of being that. Because I think it's, you know, we've got it there, we teed it up and everything, but more and more individuals have to recognize that we are, for example, using, like, the chamber is willing to use the, they're going to start putting the logo, you know, on that. We internally are going to be doing that as well. Destination El Paso is willing to set up a place at the airport that has, we have to figure out, they're going to, they're going to be selling those kinds of products, and we have to work with legal to see what that means. But, but I think that there was some confusion that the Veterans' Capital of the USA was a continued focus on, on the gaps and all that, but we have enough, you know, organizations doing that. We've got our own with Carl, and, and so we were able to separate that and say, we understand that because the gaps have to do a lot with it. But one of the things that was very important was that they understood that one of the big, big reasons for Veterans' Capital of the USA was the caliber of the veterans and the disproportionate that died here in El Paso and the rural areas, and because what we're getting caught up in, well, if you're the Veterans' Capital of the US, how come my uncle went and he didn't get service until, you know, they delayed him two days, or, and that would be really difficult, that we would always have that kind of challenge. We're going to look at the gaps, but I think the biggest component, and I wish, I think we did a good job at the Coliseum, is that recognizing the incredible veterans that have been in our community, from Company E to Isaac Amacho to Flores, to, I mean, it's just endless, endless amount. And that's where we really stand, stand strong. They could tell us about, you know, whether or not we don't do some, something that happens in a service, and we could be challenged from anybody. But where we cannot get challenged, we believe, because of the research and what you've done, and the history, and the landmarks, and all that, is already the existing, and that we could, that we, we are able to say, we are the Veterans' Capital. As I've said, you know, people take it, you know, I welcome the precedent saying, you know, welcome to the Veterans' Capital. I've said that to the senators, I said that to the mayor of New York, and, but we need to be able to get a lot of people, first the community, and then also the rest of Texas. We're doing a lot of that. We have a lot of strategies during the legislative session, you know, we're going to be taking the senators, all the legislation backpacks, and, you know, we're going to provide them with, with, you know, the pins and so forth, because I, I just want to make sure that we understand that the money that we got and everything was to promote, but then for us, Dr. Madrigal, to figure out, how do we benefit from that? You know, what's the benefit and the return? And of course, it's tourism, people wanting to come see, you know, our county because we have the museums, we have all of these things for veterans, economic development that we, we get more into the history, and that we provide that history when people come in. So just wanted to make sure, if you could also, as we do a strategic planning, that we don't continue to reinforce the idea that our lane is strictly on, on the gap side, and more so on making sure. For example, we're trying to get that announcement on the, at the airport, that the mayor and myself would say, you know, welcome to the Veterans' Capital of the USA, kind of thing. I don't know how much the city, the city has played a secondary part. Thanks to Paul Albright, we've been able to connect a little bit, but they're still not fully engaged. So it's really a county project, but I think we also have to, what is it that we expect to get in return? So just wanted to comment on, on these, sort of, we shifted a little bit more. I, I don't think we shifted. I think it was shifting in that direction versus the original premise of, of what we were trying to accomplish.
A focus on branding, the whole initiative. And then we, we discussed leveraging what the partners are already doing to close those gaps, but really focusing on, on the branding of the US Capitol, the Veterans' Capital of the US. And I know that the, our communications team is spearheading that effort, and I know that they're working on a very strong marketing plan to move forward.
Especially the rural areas, like I always say, you, you go visit and you see the number of, of individuals that died in the wars, and oh my goodness, it's like, how could it be in this small community and have that many? So, so I, I want to make sure that that's how we defend ourselves. The other one, it would be an endless battle as to whether or not we deserve because of the gaps or whatever. Although we came out, number seventh in, in the country as best place for veterans, and not, no one in Texas gained that, you know, there was no one in the top 20, I think, that were from Texas. So we have a lot of, that balance is important, but I think our branding is what's really going to make a big difference.
And as you mentioned, also grounding our claim on all the, the rich history related to veterans and Fort Bliss here in the county.
We've got a long ways. Every day I hear some other person that, that has, you know, medals and things like that that we had never recognized. So we're, we're barely at the tip of the iceberg, and we already feel comfortable that we are that community that, that deserves that title.
Maybe it's a good idea to, to begin documenting all that, that anecdotal information we're collecting, interactions with the residents as, as we promote the US Capitol of veterans.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
Could we have played the county? Of the suicide that we just had over in the parking lot of that hospital, you know, what is it that, that we could have done that maybe we ought to be striving for that would, I heard the interview with the director, and it was, it was just, he wasn't pointing fingers, but it was, he was really not answering the question. And that, I think, is the critical part. I think we got a big black eye there, that somewhere along the line, he was failed.
Yeah, we, we have gaps, like I said, for example, and I've, and hopefully you as well, all of us, but we still have funerals with no one there at the funeral for, for a veteran, for example. And I keep saying, at what point did we not know that, that this person was going to die by themselves? You know, that there's nobody was going to be there? Or where do we intervene? And some are from suicide, and others are just from health, but to be there is just one of the most moving things that you can ever imagine, because you keep thinking, you know, we should have caught that later, I mean, earlier, so that we could say, you know, you need to be socializing more, how do we bring more friends together, I mean, more of a relationship before someone ends up in a funeral, and then we're looking for the, the keepers to be part of the pallbearers. That's a really, so, so we do look at the gaps, you know, because that's going to be part of, like, the challenge of why we shouldn't be. But like, like I said, that was not, the, the main component was recognizing our incredible veterans that live in our community. So that, that balance is going to be really important. You don't take care of the gaps with a black eye on this side, but if you don't recognize the veterans as well, and figure out how do we do that, you know, it'll be a continuous effort.
There was some conversation during our last meeting that the strategy was twofold, and the second part of that was really honing in and bringing awareness to the Veterans' Assistance Resource Center. I know that they compile a directory, and that we're moving, Mr. Carl Dreyer was validating all those resources available to veterans and when they need it, and make sure that it's available to them in paper form and online through the county's website, so they have access to these services if they ever have a crisis or in need of other services.
We also have to know that the indices of suicide in general has gone up tremendously, so when that happens, then you're going to also increase the, the veteran population is going to be in that same vulnerable situation. But I mean, just generally, I mean, Fort Bliss, for example, the number, I think it was 23, I believe, in last year, just at Fort Bliss, and in our border patrol agencies. And so it's not just a veteran, or it shouldn't be a veteran died, therefore, we're now taking care of veterans. I think we have to look at the overall picture that we, we have a huge challenge in, in suicide that we have to address very quickly, so. But just sort of incorporating that when we get to our strategic planning.
Yes, sir. Like other goals, the majority of projects under Goal Six are in the early stages of development, with 70% in Phase One. In Phase Two, and the remaining 15%, 15% in Phase Two, and the remaining 15% have been The objective of Goal Seven, Value El Paso County Family, is to Prioritize the Wellbeing and Development of Our Employees. For Objective Support, this goal, and these objectives include Analyze Best Practices to Create Employee Supportive Wage and Benefit Policies and Progressive Employment Practices. There are two activities under this specific objective. The first one is Financial Assistance for Employees Waiting to Become Naturalized US Citizens. The concept and different models are currently being researched. The second project under this objective is Employee Health Clinics and Service Expansion, specifically with Report with Options, Direction and Funding Opportunities. Identify Expanded Services Desired for On-Site Employee Health Crisis Clinics and the Necessary Space Needed to Provide These Services. Both of those activities are in Phase One. Objective Two is Attract and Retain an A-plus Workforce, County Workforce. Also has two activities under it. The first one is County Staffing and Space Need. And this project is in Phase One, specifically staff is analyzing the past five years of staffing growth. The second object, second activity under Objective Two is Paid County Internship Programs, currently in Phase Two. Staff has acquired information on other successful local government internship programs and paid and unpaid internships look, and will bring back to the court for direction. Objective Three is to Increase Growth Career Progression Plans for County Employees. This specific objective has one activity under it, and it's related to Career Progression Plans. Review Existing Career Progression Plans, which already exist for county, for various county departments, including constables, commissioners' court, et cetera, that is currently in the planning phase or Phase One. And lastly, we have Objective Four, which is Keep Moving the Wage Salaries Towards Higher Minimum Wages. This activity is in Phase Five, where the county has moved towards the minimum, towards increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour. The current, currently, the staff is analyzing current positions under $15 and determine if possible reclassification through Paid Analysis Questionnaire. Out of all the activities under Goal Seven, 66% are in Phase One, which is a planning and research stage. This means that the majority of activities are in the early stages of development. 17% of activities are in Phase Two, awaiting direction and approval from the court and may need budget allocation. The remaining 17% are in activities are in implementation phase, which have been approved and are currently being executed. In summary, the majority of activities under Goal Seven are in the planning and research phase, with a small portion of approval and implementation phase. The aim of Goal Eight is to Strengthen Financial Health, is to Ensure the Long-Term Financial Stability of the Organization. This includes Objective 8.51, which is Align Revenue and Expense Growth and Identify Alternative Revenue Resources. There are three activities under this objective. The first one relates to Reviewing and Updating Fees and Charges for Services. Currently, staff is collaborating with the Auditor's Office and other departments to develop a method to gather relevant statutory revenue data and determine how to move forward. Objective 8.12 is the OME Edition, Edition of Lines of Service. This is in Preparation of Updated Fee Schedules for Services, and currently is in, in review by the County Attorney's Office. Next, we have Grant Optimal Performance. Initiate a Grant Opportunity Evaluation of ARPA Portfolio. This specific objective is in Phase Two of Implementation. Next, we have Objective Two, which is Participatory Budgeting. This objective is linked back to our Public Engagement Campaign, 5.4, and as I mentioned earlier, we are in our second year of implementing the Community Engagement Survey, and this year, we included items specific to budget direction and where the, the public sees that we should invest public funds. I will share with, as soon as we compile the data and analyze it, we'll be sharing a report with the court. Objective Three is Reduce Energy Cost, Energy Management Strategy. There is one objective, one activity under this objective, and it's specific to Energy Management Strategy, Development, Direction and Funding. Currently, Public Works is waiting on a quote from Schneider Electric Company on the cost to implement an energy conservation plan. Objective Four, Update Financial Policies to Include an Economic Downturn Plan. This specific activity is to Update Financial Policies That Include an Economic Downturn Plan, Identify Comparable and Target Communities, and Gather Sample Policies with Economic Downturn Budgetary Actions to Present to the Court. This, this activity is in Phase One. Objective Five, Create a Life Cycle Replacement Program Fund. It has three activities. The first one is Create Asset Investment Policy and Procedures. Create an Asset Inventory Plan for County Facilities, Infrastructure and Equipment is the second activity. Both of those activities are in Phase One. And lastly, we have County Vehicle and Equipment Replacement, Schedule, Review, Direction and Funding. This specific activity is spearheaded by the Fleet Department, Mr. Hopeston Staple, and is, and has been implemented and is ongoing yearly. Objective Six is Prepare Capital Needs for Long-Term Debt Issuance. This specific activity relates to Create Bond Requirement Training Programs, Research Best Practices from the GFOA, and this activity is in Phase One. Goal Eight is Divided as Such. 50% of activities are in Phase One, 20% are in Phase Two, and 10% are in Phase Four, 20 are in Phase Five. So there's a lot of moving parts in this goal in terms of activities to fulfill the objectives outlined by the court. Objective Nine, or Goal Nine, is to Optimize Internal Processes to Improve Organizational Efficiency and Effectiveness Through Data-Driven Decision-Making and Accountability to the Community. To Achieve this goal, the court identified four objectives. The first one is to Utilize Information Technology to Improve efficiencies and Effectiveness. Specific goal, work under this objective focused on Electronic Meaning Management, and the system has been procured, and it has been purchased, and now we're moving into training in how to use this software. Under Objective Two is Improve the County Procurement Process. We are looking at implementing the diagnostic process and to see how procurement could be more effective and determine any type of hiccups in the process. We're in the initial stages of Phase One of this project. Objective Three is Provide Online Services for Customers by Enhancing Online Technology Services, Specifically, Counties Expand a Use of Technology Plan, Develop and obtain Direction and Funding, Create, and we're looking at Creating Cross-Functional Teams for Existing State Holders, to Determine What Are the Needs in Terms of Customer Service Through Technology. Lastly, we have Evaluate and Assess Current Business Processes. Objective Four, we have two, two activities under this one, under this objective. The first one is Implementations and Recommendations, for recommendations from the Process Initiative Ballrich. We're in the second phase of this. We are looking at the progress phase, and it's in Phase One. And next, we have the EP Exceeds Lean Six Sigma Project, which we are looking at Phase Two of that project. We implemented it, and now we're looking at doing an internal certification type for yellow belts and green belts, have I gone to the training, are aware, and are implementing some of the, the practices that are part of the Lean Six Sigma. are part of the Lean Six Sigma.
Dr. Madrigal, and that's part of the, are we still, or maybe Betsy might know as well, on the community of excellence? Is that part of that?
Yes, it's a fourth tier to get to the community of excellence. We're in the second step of it, which is what we're going to embark this year. The first phase of this was a commitment and now we're in the progress level. So we have the feedback from, from the consultants that looked, or the Texas Quality, that looked at our application. They highlighted some areas of best practice, some areas of need, so we're moving forward with the second year of that application before we get to the next step, which is the communities of excellence.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to the progress of Goal Nine, 66% of activities are in Phase One, 17% are in Phase Two, and another 17 are in the implementation phase. And in conclusion, the strategic plan lays out a comprehensive vision for the county and the work that needs to be done to achieve it. The nine goals have been outlined and are interconnected in the work together to support the overall mission of the county. The court has identified specific objectives and activities that need to be completed in order to achieve each goal, and it's important that all stakeholders understand these goals and the work that needs to be done in, in order to support them. During our upcoming strategic planning retreat, the court will continue to make adjustments as needed, update and refresh, I always say restart, the plan to ensure that the county's on track to achieve the objectives and fulfill its mission. With that, I'm open to any questions that you may have regarding the strategic plan and their planning retreat.
Well, thank you. Look forward to, what's the dates on, that we have so far?
February 22nd and 23rd.
22nd.
If nobody else has any questions yet, I'll wait till the last, but, you know, I'm very impressed with the, with the strategic plan that we have. I'm going to propose something that I think is going to touch on almost every single one of our strategic goals, maybe except for the tourism and infrastructure. And, and that is a program where it's a free community college workforce training program for the entire county. And I think one of the things that we really need to focus on is that our, our young individuals, a lot of them are leaving our county, our city and county because they can't find jobs here. And I think we have an opportunity, especially with the, with the airport in Fabinz, with UTEP's grant, with our medical facilities, to be able to implement this program when we're calling for lack of, you know, innovation is the El Paso promise. And that's basically to allow individuals who have not continued their education or gotten any kind of skill set or workforce training to make sure that we eliminate every single obstacle that they have in continuing their education or getting some kind of a work training. I've seen it, I've seen it in our community. I've been involved in the criminal justice system. I see a lot of our kids, especially in the, in some of these that are on probation on these lesser crimes, that we focus more on the punishment than the rehabilitation. And so I want to work, I think this is going to be really a great program for the entire county. It's going to involve, you know, something, this has been done in Dallas, I'm not reinventing, we're not reinventing the wheel, but it's been done in Dallas and it's been done in San Antonio. I've been trying to focus on starting this when, when I was in the Canotillo district, but I think we have an opportunity here to make sure that what these other programs in Dallas and San Antonio have not done is included justice reform as part of their plan. And to that extent, I would like, and then basically just to give you a little overview of the, of the program, is we want to eliminate every single obstacle. For example, what we find in, you know, from surveys that we've done is that our kids, as to, they're asked as to why they didn't continue their education, why don't they have a skill set, why don't they have a career, is they give all these kinds of obstacles that they face and they never try to overcome them. So this program aims at trying to eliminate all of that. We hear obstacles that they face, such as, well, you know, I don't have the money, this is going to be free. What we find, though, is that most of these kids are individuals, they do qualify for grants for education, but there's a gap in there that some that actually want to do this, but they don't have the money. This program will provide that gap, will fill that gap to be able to make sure that everybody who wants to do this will have access to that workforce training. And the other obstacles that they, that we hear from that they face is, look, I've got commitments, I have to work, I have a family, or I've got to help with the family issues at home. Well, we're going to ask them to commit to us and either work two or three days out of the week, as long as they commit to us and follow our standards and our requirements that they maintain a certain grade point average, they keep involved and they register every semester for these classes, that we're going to stick with them and help them with that. I don't have transportation. Well, we want the city and that's why the expansion of the transit system is really another key to this, is we find that these other obstacles that they say they have is, well, I don't have really adequate transportation. We want to get the city to give them a free bus pass. If we expand the transit system into the outline areas, and I'm sure that's a concern for Commissioner Olgin and myself in our outline areas in Canotillo and, and the Lower Valley, that, that some of them don't have that access to the transit system. But, and there's, I can go on with other obstacles that we want to try and alleviate and remediate. Some of them are, you know, I haven't really completely finished high school. You know, our kids that are on probation here, there's always, always constantly a requirement in their probation requirements that they complete their GED or high school if they haven't done so, but we really never exercised and focused in any of that. And so I'm, I think we really have an opportunity here that to, because this will not only, you know, alleviate some of our access to jobs here, it might attract, will attract industry here. If we have a, a trained workforce, and right now we have an opportunity with the aerospace and UTEP, we're in between two major aerospace companies that have moved into the area. We've got just outside of Cruzes, we've got Virgin Galactic, outside of Van Horn, we have Mr. Bezos. And now we've got the grant from University of Texas at El Paso. I'll be meeting with Dr. Shaduri here in the very near future with our, with our Texas Workforce Commission. I want to bring a plan to Commissioners Court that I hope you will support because I think it touches on all of our strategic goals, with the exception of a few of them. But not only that, it's going to provide an opportunity for us to collaborate with all the local county governments, our community college, our local school districts, and all the municipalities here in our county to make sure that we focus on these issues that our kids are not, you know, continuing on and they move out because they don't see higher paying jobs here. I think we can develop it. It's worked in Dallas, it's worked in San Antonio. I don't see why other major metro areas in the state have not done it, but I think we should do that. What's different of the plan that I want to propose for the court and our organization is that I want to include, those other programs do not include part of their program to include the, in justice reform. And I'm talking about these individuals that are on probation on some of these lesser crimes. And I don't want to call them petty because to victims, some of these crimes are not petty. But, for example, we want to make sure that instead of the punishment arm of the justice system, that I want to make sure that we target some of these individuals to say, look, if you promise to engage in this program and commit to us, I want to make sure that the financial requirements from the probation issue are relieved, that other than maybe whatever the classes that are required of them for whatever particular crime they're on probation. But aside from that, we are going to relieve part of that issue of the supervision of these kids in the probation department. I know that's another area, that's where another subject on justice reform is our, our probation officers are severely overloaded. At one time, they were supervising 200 kids, 200 people, rather, and I'm not going to say call them kids, but 200 individuals. And they have to see them every month. Can you imagine what time spent that's going to, that they would have to devote to making sure that they adequately supervise our individuals that are on probation? There's just, you know, with aside with all there are, there are the administrative duties, going to court, preparing reports, you know? This is, to me, that's just something we really need to work on. It's a lot less now. I think it's down to somewhere around 130 or 140. Maybe somebody here can correct me if I'm wrong, but I haven't looked at the figures recently. But some of these areas, I think will relieve some of the issues. It's going to really focus on a lot of these goals that we have. I think it'll increase, you know, for, you know, certainly the income capability of our, of our community, other individuals, and maybe even keep them from getting into trouble, reducing this recidivism rate. If we get them some kind of skill set, of workforce training, I think they're less likely to engage in these other activities on these petty crimes like theft, et cetera. And so I think we have an opportunity to be able to do this that really will involve our entire county government agencies. And so to that extent, I will be hopefully in the near future providing a, a plan and hopefully a resolution that the Commissioners Court can adopt that we want to implement or at least start to implement this plan here in El Paso. And we can have a phase, certain phases within it. I would like to maybe even start with our, with our individuals that are on probation and have that be the pilot program to do. I think it would, you know, it goes a long way to touching on these goals that we want to implement, and it's something that can be a collaboration with the entire level of county governments and the community. And in the future, what we find is a lot of these individuals who have not continued their education for some reason or other, is several other factors. And we find that the, the parents of these individuals also have not had any educational opportunities. So the second phase, or the third phase that I proceeded down there is that eventually the parents of the kids that we involved in this program, we want to eventually give them an opportunity to come back to school and maybe get their, enhance their, their workforce training and capabilities and improve their lives. And I think that that's something that I, I would like the court to, to consider and to list as one of our projects that we want to do in the area of our strategic planning, so.
Thank you for that.
I have a lot of other ideas and other things, but I don't, I have a lot on my plate right now.
Yeah, but Dr. Madrigal, where would you incorporate that?
I immediately moved over into transform economic development, specifically Objective Five, focus on attracting higher wage industries. So you focus on specific clusters, like you mentioned, and a lot of the times, it focuses on four-year degrees and not looking at those two-year degrees and technical skills. A lot of times, there's just some recent research that students don't apply because they don't know that there is financial assistance to help them apply for college. There's also scholarship programs throughout the community that we could connect students with, just as involved. So it falls under a lot of the goals that we're looking at in terms of what the court outlined that they wanted to do.
And one of the stakeholders would also be workforce solutions, right?
Absolutely.
Because we already have a good relationship with them and some of the things that were mentioned were collateral things that workforce solution does as well. So hopefully, maybe some way that you could incorporate that as part of the strategic plan and then allow, you know, work with Commissioner Coronado to see how, you know, we could get it to a certain point for when we go to strategic planning, that we incorporate that. Because I think we're right, there's a lot of, of touch points from economic job creation. And a lot of it is not so many that our kids leave, but how many are underemployed. That's the real harsh, the one sort of hidden because they never leave, but they're, they make so much less money and then they struggle, right? And they struggle, they get in trouble, there's other factors that come to play. So I think it's a very, something that we really need to look at.
Absolutely. Whatever I could do, I'm a big proponent of higher education and empowering our youth to continue their education and make better, have better opportunities and closing that opportunity gap.
There's been a big push by like Western tech. I know Jefferson High School typically your magnet schools are, you know, medical and now they're focusing on vocational. And some of the jobs that pay very, very well had always been ignored, you know, that they might make more than someone even going to college because their technicians right now are extremely valuable and we have shortage. According, most of the hospitals are struggling with that, what Commissioner Coronado was talking about, the technical help, you know, at the hospitals.
There's also research that's saying a lot of plumbers and welding, they're about to retire and there's that gap in age. So whatever Commissioner Coronado, you need from me, I'll be happy to do some research in preparation for strategic planning.
We are accumulating the research now. We're, like I said, I've got some, some meetings scheduled, like with Dr. Shaduri and Texas Workforce Commission. And it's, it'll take me, it'll take us a while to do that. I would like to solicit some help eventually that we'd like, that the court could consider through funding to have a position for somebody to help us with that, that part of, because I think this will be a major project that really touches on all our strategic goals. And I think it's for the betterment of our community. You know, research indicates that when these, in these two areas, and not just in Texas, but in throughout the country where these plans, where these programs have been implemented, there's a percentage of people that it's less, they're less likely to move out of the county. And it does attract another percentage of people that would, that would, are attracted to the county. And so with that respect, I think that goes a lot towards economic development and really increasing the opportunities here and to attract industry.
Well, Commissioner, I think you're going to be very impressed with Dr. Madrigal when she takes on a, I don't know if you need more on your plate, but she's extremely good about sort of putting things together and.
I will. We will certainly.
Because if you could meet a little bit, you know, ASAP kind of thing, but.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Judge, one other, a couple other comments I just have, and you know, forgive my lack of knowledge on this, but with respect to the strategic role of our El Paso County family and the internal processes that we have, I'd just like to know that if, if we have a, a survey of, a general survey of all the El Paso family to make sure that we are addressing issues that come up. I know morale in the past has been, in some of the departments, has been an issue and, and that we address every single aspect of our El Paso County family employees, that areas, you know, we want to, I would like to, if we, if we're not doing that, I would like to solicit their input as to what they think of their entire process and their employment, everything from, you know, where they're situated in their facilities to their department heads, to their supervisors, to us as commissioners, whether they think we're doing a good job or not, what they feel they need, I'd like to see implemented, everything to touch on all the aspects of employment, including morale in their departments.
Well, we have an in-house expert.
I was going to say.
But Betsy was our HR chief, but I think you could address that. I know we do a lot of that, but you want to go ahead and?
So we, we have used, we do a couple different surveys. We do, we use a Gallup survey, engagement survey, which is a validated survey. We use also under our court tools, some of the programs in the court specifically, there's an employee survey. Those results go directly to the, to the leaders of the judiciary to address the findings. And then we've done separate surveys on different issues, like for example, benefits, different, really focused on things. As you know, the science behind surveys shows they're only, they actually can do more damage than they can do good if you don't plan to act on the outcome. And so that's why we've really been focused on the types of surveys. And we've used surveys like the Gallup survey, that's, that's a well, well-known, recognized survey for the, like what we can do to keep, keep employees engaged. Those have been our approach to them over the last several years.
And do we have access to the actual solicitations of questions that are on that survey?
Yes, and we can actually go over in one of our briefings, Commissioner, the results of that survey.
And are we able to, I guess if we're working with these outside vendors to do the surveys, hope we, obviously we can modify those to include other, other issues.
The, not with a Gallup survey. The, not with a Gallup survey, it's a, it's a, because it's based, you compare yourself, the same questions are asked across all organizations, so you have benchmarks. That one, that one is not modifiable. But there's others that we could, like for example, the benefits or other ones that are very specific. We could, we could tailor to make sure it's going to address. Yes, sir. Make sure it's going to address.
Oh, good, then I can meet with you about those.
Our specific interest.
I also had a conversation with Mr. Santrillo, and he was looking at the items related to the best place to work to adopt that survey because it was less expensive than the Gallup survey. And another example that we did internally, I developed that survey in collaboration with Joe Bishop for the public.
Defender?
Defender, yes.
So that's an example of one we've done specific to an area?
Yes. And we did the second follow-up and we had some pre and post measures.
Okay.
And Mr. Joe Bishop has all the survey results and the, the report that we wrote.
Yeah, I'm meeting with him this afternoon.
And we presented that to the court after.
I love surveys. You had me at hello.
Well, thank you, Judge.
No, you're very welcome, Commissioners.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
We look forward to listening to your ideas in strategic planning.
We appreciate the, the feedback and the follow-up from here to the strategic planning, so.
Judge, we have, we're at 12:22. We do have lunch available. If you all wanna take a break for a few minutes and grab something? Or do you wanna keep going and discuss the EHN board appointment process?
We have one more, right? So what do you think?
I'm okay to power through.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
I think most of us would rather.
Okay, perfect.
Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding appointing a representative for the Emergence Health Network Board for the term from January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2024.
We put this item back on because at your last, on January 9th, when you all were discussing your board appointments, there were a couple of different thoughts about how to approach an appointee to Emergence Health Network. So we wanted to put it on for today's work session where you all would have more time to discuss different ideas and the pros and cons of whether it should be a member of Commissioners Court or a public appointee that the court selects. And what, and if you do go that route, setting up a process for that selection. Whether or not you want to just bring an individual nominee or you wanna open it up for applications and interview potential candidates.
One other thing I think that would settle a lot is whether or not there's a commissioner. I, I know, I didn't realize how much I was getting into the MPO and it, it took on like three other things that I have to do now. And so like, I wouldn't be able to do that. But if there was a, what would be settled, if there's a commissioner that actually wants that, is very different if we don't have a commissioner that's interested in, in taking that role. And then that sort of opens a discussion. But if there is someone, I mean, it would be difficult for, for us as Commissioners Court to say, well, you know, there's a commissioner that's interested, but we're gonna look at other options. But if there isn't, then it does open, like what do we do at that point? If we don't have another commissioner that, that would be able to take that responsibility? But I don't know, I, I guess we'll wait for, I know Commissioner Leon had, had already been in that, in that function, right, as a?
Yeah, he was, he was, he was on the EHN board up until 2015 when I, when I took over his, I took over an unexpired term for him as he wanted to, to roll off. But I mean, I, so, so for me, I, I, I hope somebody in, in the court would, would be willing to do so. I feel like it's an, it's an important appointment. And having somebody from the Commissioners Court on the board, I think is really important for, for oversight purposes, for, you know, making sure that, that we're kept abreast of what's going on there. And, you know, I, I, I feel like, you know, many, many of the other local mental health authorities across the state, all of the members are commissioners. A lot of times, that's because they have different counties that are, you know, contributing to the, to the, to the boards. But I feel like we should have at least one, one member of the court on there. And I mean, I understand if nobody wants to do it, but it's not, it's not an overly time-consuming position. You know, we have a, a meeting once a month, it's usually an hour, an hour and a half long. And then there's committees as well. And, and usually, it's either one or two committees that you get put on, and that's half an hour to an hour a month as well. So it's, it's not overly time-consuming unless you become like the EHN appointee to the state board like I was. But, but, you know, that, I, I would really, you know, urge, I don't know, I don't know if Commissioner Coronado or Commissioner Jean.
Let me bring Commissioner Leon up to date now. What we're saying is that in this new, the topic that we're gonna address now, Commissioner, is that if there's someone that is interested in it, then it sort of doesn't make sense that we don't. But if, if we can't get someone from the court, then we can have that discussion on, you know, what do we do? And to, to me personally is that if I were there, I'd feel locked in because I work with Aliviani, I work with different organizations, I'm trying to look at mental health from a bigger perspective. And so I see it more in my role that, that I would feel some of the concerns that they might have, I would feel those concerns that being on the board, then I'm sort of being a little partial to, to them versus when, when I'm looking at Aliviani calls me and other people call me, they have concerns about, you know, about EHN. So I feel much better being in, in a position for mental health in a general sense and, and not getting caught up in that. And so I feel like that. And then obviously, like I said, the commitment that I didn't realize I was gonna be in the MPO, if I'm elected tomorrow, is, I've already been to like three different meetings that they're expecting me to be at. So it would be a little bit overwhelming for me to take on another, another board. So like I said, if there's someone who's interested, then really the conversation should end at that point because there's someone. But it isn't, then what do we do about providing? Is it somebody from the county? I mean, is it the person that the board asked me to, to interview and, you know, sort of recommend? You know, where do we go from there? But I think the first question is, is there anybody willing to take that, that appointment?
Judge? I, I eventually would like to serve on this board. I don't know that at this time I can commit the time to do that because if I'm gonna get involved in something like that, that's an area where we are severely lacking in services to the community and not just here in El Paso, statewide and countrywide. And, you know, that deserves time and effort to provide some, you know, assistance in that area. And right now, I eventually would like to serve on there, but right now, I don't know that I can commit the time to doing as much as I would like to do in that aspect, so.
Thank you for consideration. So if that, if we don't have someone, then, you know, can we have a discussion on how do you, what do you think would be the best way to, you know, cover that area?
I think, I think we should, if there's nobody on the court that's willing to do it, then, then, then we should open, open a process and, and have a, just like we do on, on any other board, appointee that we have, we have a process.
Yes, sir, Commissioner? I, I, I think I agree with you, Commissioner, but I think, you know, I think Emergence has said that they wanted somebody as soon as possible, right? And in order for the transition, I don't know if you're still attending the meetings or not, but.
So, so I think the, the attorneys advised me that, that I would be a holdover until somebody is appointed. So, I mean, I'm willing to continue to go into the meetings until somebody is appointed.
Okay. I was gonna say, if you wanted to get off, I would support the judge's nomination of the individual because I think the EHN sent us a letter indicating that, that he would be a valuable asset to, to the board.
Yeah, and, and I just wanna comment on that too because, again, you know, I'm very wary of, of, you know, receiving advice or, or.
From the very board, organization?
Or from, from, you know, I, I, I don't have a problem with, you know, saying, look, these are the type of people or, or positions or, you know, type of people that we would like to be appointed to the board or that we, that we think would be, would be a good fit to the board. But, but when it comes to, you know, the, the, you know, sending us and, and saying, we want this person, it gives me a little, it makes me wary. You know, I don't, I don't remember having ever, at least last year, this individual being discussed by the board. It seems to me like the letter that was sent, was sent on behalf of the organization, which means it was sent on behalf of the board. I reached out to one of the board members who's on the executive committee. And, and, and I tried to get the meeting notes from the last executive committee. There weren't any available. And, and according to, according to her, she's never heard of this person before. And that gives me even more pause because, you know, the way things sometimes are run over there. You know, this, this board member herself has made many, many complaints about being on the executive committee and not being involved in even some of the decision-making that they're, that they're doing within the executive committee. And I just don't know where the, the, the appointee came from. But, you know, if it's coming from, from the CEO, it's definitely something that I'm wary of. And, and I, I just feel like they overstepped their bounds a little bit by telling us who we should appoint. And we should have a process.
Cindy made it very clear that it was not the organization, that it was the board and that.
The board never had a vote, Judge. I was on, I've been in, I was at the last board meeting, they didn't have a vote at that meeting. They didn't have any vote at any prior meetings. So if they're representing that it was, that the board chose this person, that's not true. I mean, if, if, if there was a vote that was taken, I don't know when. And, and, and when it comes to the executive committee, you know, they're not allowed to, in, in my opinion, to make decisions on behalf of the whole board. And, and again, the board member that I spoke to said that she had never heard of this person. She's on the executive committee, it wasn't brought to her attention. She wasn't asked to, to vet this person one way or the other. And that also, again, gives me even more pause to, you know, when it comes to going forward with, with just one person that, that EHN has come up with and said that they want on the board.
I mean, they were very, when I met with the chair and, and with Cindy was strictly on, we're gonna go into a lot of real estate areas, we, we need a lot of contract work, we don't have someone in that. So to me, it felt legitimate that they're recognizing, and I've been on boards where, where you recognize, hey, we need a, this specific board member. But, you know, you have to trust the whole board that is, that they're doing the right thing. And so that's what I did. I said, well, this is a, a need that they have. And, you know, I, I'm willing to, to request it to the Commissioners Court as if they feel that this person, contract work, real estate kind of thing, really fit in. And so I said, I'm willing to present it to the court, yeah?
I, I have the, the same concerns as Commissioner Stout. But since, just a suggestion, I received a call also from a board member telling me about the same thing. And, and my staff did some research and touched base a lot with Commissioner Stout's staff. And I do have some concerns. My, my thoughts are that maybe as, yeah, they are, they are in a rush. And that's one thing I, I don't like to ever do, that we're rushed into something. If Commissioner Stout doesn't mind staying in as a holdover, we, you know, two things, he can go in there and check things out, or is it coming from, from the board or is it coming from another direction? Then we can make a more educated appointment. But, but I think that, yeah, their, their, their backs apparently are up against the wall as far as time. But nonetheless, they have Commissioner Stout willing to stay as a holdover until a suitable replacement is found.
I think the rush was, I think they're looking at buildings or they're looking at places that they need to purchase. If they wanted contract work, that was the rush. So whatever the, the court, whatever is, you know, pleasure of the court, I would.
And, and when it, when it comes to those issues, typically staff works on those issues. I mean, we get reports from staff. We're not involved in the contract making or, or, you know, we sign off on the contracts, right? But, you know, I, I, I know that there are some property acquisitions coming up and such. And, but, but you don't need, in my opinion, to rush into appointing somebody because they have acumen in that, in that area. Because really, at, at the board level, that's, that's staff, that's staff level work that's, that's being done. The board, the board doesn't get involved in operations.
And Commissioner Stout, they have a, a board, a staff attorney, do they not?
Yeah, he's, he's right there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Good afternoon, Judge. First, my name is Michael Wyatt. As some of you know, I'm an assistant county attorney. And my assignment is to be the general counsel for Emergence Health Network. I'm happy to be a resource for you during this discussion. I can tell you that my boss, the county attorney, would certainly agree that it's entirely your sound discretion, who you decide to pick and what method you choose to pick them. So, so speaking on behalf of the county attorney, I think that whatever you choose to do is, is your legal prerogative. Speaking on behalf of my client, I was requested by the board chair, Mr. Goldfarb, to attend today's meeting. He's unable to attend today, simply so I could report back to him what the decision was. Speaking to the issue that has been raised about the timeliness of this appointment, the issue is that next week is our annual meeting. The January meeting is our annual meeting. As a, you know, a Texas entity, we hold an annual meeting where there's a selection of officers. In addition to that, at the meeting, we will be conducting in-depth strategic planning, which will dictate the organization's goals and, and processes for the next year or three years. So that's the basis for any discussion about the timeliness of this. The inter-local agreement does request or, or does state between the county and the hospital district that this individual should be appointed before the end of the year. There is a statutory obligation that we provide training, an in-depth training to this individual before they can sit as a board member making decisions. So obviously, we will not be able to get somebody onboard, trained up and ready to serve by next Thursday at this point, so.
That's including the gentleman that, that they're recommending? He hasn't gone through any training?
I'll start by addressing the method of that selection. The executive committee of our organization does constitute a nominations committee, which is, has one of its, you know, missions is to select, not to select, to interview people to see who would fit the organization's needs. The needs of the organization are stated in the inter-local agreement between the county and the hospital district that both this organization, both this Commissioners Court and the hospital district should consider when making these appointments, the needs of the organization in the area of legal, medical background, actuarial background, anything that might be useful to an ongoing large organization. So, and that's obviously the way every board, corporate board or government board is, should be selected. So that's the, the background in terms of what the inter-local says. It says that we should try to get that appointment seated or, or the decision made last month so that we would have a few weeks to try to coordinate with the, with that individual for their training. The executive committee, Cindy Stout, who's the CEO of the hospital, the children's hospital, knows this lawyer for his firm and reached out and asked either the firm or the lawyer if he would be interested in serving. He expressed an interest. And so she and Mr. Goldfarb spoke to him and have, have met to talk about whether he would be interested, what the needs of the organization are. the organization are, which do include the fact that there are some real estate projects on the horizon. They were hoping to have a transactional lawyer with expertise in real estate and business organizations, because those are, that's sort of lacking on our Board at this moment. Commissioner's correct, the Board doesn't get involved in the contracts, but they can certainly advise and consent to what's going on with contracts. Anyways, so that's how Mr. Daw was, his name was floated. There was a discussion among two of the three members of the Executive Committee. I don't know whether Representative Anello is the other person that's being referred to here, is not having been informed. I'm not aware of that. That's, the Board members brought it to you in that form. There was never a vote of the full Board to recommend him. The full Board doesn't feel like that's their position.
Well, how does the Court feel like, they're recommending something? At the moment, obviously, I was very interested that sort of accommodates something that they needed, and I thought, you know, did interview him and everything. I think if we take a vote, and then we, if we vote no, then we vote no. But I think that the vote should be taken, and then we decide whether or not we agree on it. And if that isn't, then we take the next step. But, you know, I had presented it earlier to say, I'm recommending this person, but we never voted on it. So to me, that'll tell the story as to whether or not we're willing to move forward with this gentleman, and if not, then we do what we need to do.
Judge, if I may, on a lot of the Boards, we actually interview them, and when there's multiple applicants. But if it's the Board that's making this recommendation, I'd like to at least have the opportunity to interview them, not myself, but the Court. We interview them, we listen to them, and in the meantime, Commissioner Stout is still there as a holdover, and I don't see why, I don't think, and I, matter of fact, I know Commissioner Stout will only be an asset to the Board as they make this transition.
I just, I thought just what he was saying about the fact that he doesn't go through the training, doesn't go through the next Board member, he's going to, Commissioner Stout will be out, and then this person misses out that strategic planning, that sort of, I know how critical that could be. Betsy, are you...
Judge, I was just going to say, if you want to make the motion, I mean, you know, you're saying the concept of you make the motion that we appoint this person, if it fails, it does not prevent the Court from still considering having an interview with him, and still appointing him after you've interviewed. Or whether you interview him individually, or have him be one of the applicants, if you open it up to the, to a wide array of applicants, you could still interview him as one of those applicants, either way. But nothing stops you from making that motion if you want to make the motion. And if there's a second, it'd be voted upon. If not, the motion would fail.
Anna, were you going to comment on something?
Thank you, Judge. Yes, Anna Schumacher, Assistant County Attorney. I just wanted to point out something for you all to consider during this discussion, is that the inter-local actually does call for a method in terms of the notice of filling of vacancies, which does note, basically, it says, "The appointing of agency shall post a notice of vacancy to solicit applications from interested qualified individuals on their website." So there is a process in the inter-local itself to have an application process and post.
And that's what we do for the other seat. So for the other seat, you may recall, you all did interviews. For the, for the seat, you all have appointed as an at-large, that was not the Commissioner's seat. That is what you all have done in the past. We've posted, we've received applications. You all interviewed, I think last time you interviewed like four or five people when you selected...
Yeah, that's a process, again, that's a process that we, as a Court, should undergo, not the Executive Committee of EHN. You know, there may be a nominating committee for positions within their own, within their own agency, but from what I understand, they're not a nominating committee for this decision. And it's not their responsibility to come up with the appointee. It's our responsibility to come up with the appointee. And again, I think we should follow that process as we do with every single Board position that we appoint to. We, you know, whether it's the Historic Commission, whether it's UMC, I mean, you know, at-large, you know, we follow, we follow that process. And I think that, I understand, we're a little bit late on getting through that process, and, you know, but, but it seems to me this is a very important Board to be appointing to. And if a Commissioner doesn't want to take that position, then we need to go through a process. And, you know, again, it was not the full Board that made this recommendation. It was apparently two of the three members of the Executive Committee, maybe. I don't, I mean, I still am kind of unclear as to the genesis of the letter, who that letter is representing directly, but it's not the whole Board. He just said that.
Judge, if I may? So I agree that if we do already have a process in place, then there's absolutely no reason that we should deviate from it. And we certainly shouldn't deviate from it just because we feel that we have to be rushed into making a decision. So I, if we decide that it's not going to be a Commissioner who's going to be serving on this Board, then I think we do have to go through the process, the way that we did it last time for this Board, and the way that we do it for every other Board. But I guess my question was, maybe, Commissioner Coronado, you expressed an interest in the Board, but right now you don't have, you're not able to make that time commitment. Are you thinking next year or in six months? I'm wondering if there's...
I'm thinking that it depends on how much my projects that I want to go with, particularly the El Paso Promise is going to take a lot of my time, and the Justice Reform Council that I'm on, the Central Appraisal District, and I also want to work on other stuff that's related to the justice issues here in the courthouse. So I want to be, plan to be meeting with the Council of Judges on some of those aspects that actually relate not just to the justice reform, but the El Paso Promise as well. So, I mean, I'm hoping that the El Paso Promise thing we can do within a couple of years, maybe even sooner. And that's the timeframe I think I'm looking at.
No, then I think we would definitely want to go through the process, the interviews, and then choosing a candidate. And certainly, this particular individual can submit an application that he's interested in, and he may very, very well be the one that ends up getting chosen. But I think that we have to follow that process.
Betsy, what are your thoughts on how long we could sort of move in that direction, sort of following the process and...
Normally, when you have a Board seat that's open, we advertise that it's open, we put it on our website, we distribute it out to media as a public service announcement. Of course, sometimes you all solicit people to apply to be considered. Then, once we receive the applications, we do a preliminary background and make sure that they meet the requirements for that particular Board. Sometimes there's specific, like, some Boards require taxpayers, some, you know, that you must own property. We would go through and make sure they meet whatever requirements there are. And then we would schedule for the Court to do interviews. Timeline-wise, if you're saying, is there a way we could have this done by next week? There's, that's not realistic.
No, no, I'm just trying to sort of understand. I'm in agreement to follow the process then. I mean, just, you know, if you could help us get it going in the right direction, find, you know, you know, get it out there, promote it, then we'll do the interviews and...
And we're actually, we're actually thinking we may have to reschedule the date for the Women's Commission interviews, which were also supposed to be next week. But I believe some of you are going to go to the Torneo Port of Entry tour, the chamber is coordinating. And so that would interfere with those interviews, so we'll have to find another date. We may be able to find a date to block off a longer period of time. I have an item to talk to you all about separately, about those interviews that, you know, we need to see how much time we'll need. But we would see how many applicants we get for Emergence, and then set those interviews up.
Okay, so you'll take, so we're requesting from you, I don't know, we need a...
Do we need a motion or...
It would be best to have a motion to accept applications, to fill, accept applications and set up an interview process for the Court.
Advertise and accept, right?
Yes, sir. Advertise and accept applications for the Emergence Health Network Board.
I'll make that motion second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Hi.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
And this completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Okay, well, thank everybody, and have a great weekend. Our legal team, translators back there, our production team, thank you. And Commissioners, have a great weekend. Thank you. Jessica, thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:51 PM.